Excellent. All right, it is six thirty on this beautiful March twenty fifth. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as?
So who?
By Ms. Conley, second by Mr. Gilmore. Roll call vote because we have a member via Zoom.
Ms. Juric.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes, with appreciation for the accommodation.
Thank you. You now have a solid favor.
The Situate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during our meetings. It's all members to interact in polite manner even when there's disagreement. And we value the participation of our community and want all participants with marginalized and minoritized communities to feel welcomed and respected. And we ask our community and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. And with that, I'm going to take a guess, but I think we might have a walk-in. Do you have any walk-ins today? We do come on up, sir, and just for the record, just state your name and address. Yes, please. How are you?
Great. My name is Kevin Weaver and I'm twenty-one, beginning House Lane here at St. Jim. And I'm like, thank you for having me in this walk-in. I'll make this very brief, as brief as possible. It's a very long story that some of you may remember from a couple of years ago. The subject matter is the decommissioning of Plymouth Water Power Plant. A company called Holtech, which I'll dislabel at the very beginning, is a bad actor globally. Bought the plant in two thousand and nineteen. And have been busy over the last four, five years, whatever that is, decommissioning the plant. Their initial intent was to pour a million gallons of very racked waste into the, into Cape Cod Bay. Yeah, already be, none of us can bring in half a pint of paint to the company that's already gone away. So just an extraordinary, I think, great news is thank you to this August board. They were disallowed to D E P said, you cannot pour the waste into the harbor, which of course Holtech isn't feeling at this very moment. The bad news is they've decided, and are going about as we speak, evaporating the waste, which on some, on some level was worse. You know, we're breathing it unconsciously, whereas there's some dissipation that would transpire in the, in the bay, which was a very bad thing. So the shorthand of this story is there's a billion dollar trust fund that we all pay as taxpayers. It's part of the decommissioning of which there's still hundreds of millions of dollars left. And my, my appeal to the board is that you consider adding an unbinding ballot to the May town meeting that says that almost precisely the same language is what we get about pouring it into the bay with the same posture or about evaporation. Earlier today, I'm sorry, it was late, I said to you two documents that actually have the language that we're making the field of it might transpire. A question you asked two years ago, two and a half years ago, that I wasn't prepared for then, but I am now, I'm ready, is what other towns have sort of are participating in this exact request, which is to add their downed duties to the spring? And I will reveal this just because it's copious. Plymouth, Nashpea, Dennis, Yarmit, Wellesley, Harwich, Horn, Sandwich, Fallett, Rooster, Chatham, Orleans, Turo, Princeton. Coacid is giving a very serious consideration. There's an attorney there by the name of Gomero, who's actually sort of working with the Select Board. Industrial is taking a higher level of action in the sense that they've pushed away work. They're not sort of satisfied with the doubt. They're pushing, they, they have achieved one, which are very expensive, that's high proximity, that's very common, a plan. That's the story. So the appeal is that you would give consideration to adding it again. The notion being in fact, Seth Viper and I had a meeting, and maybe you're a half a goers, maybe you're a half a go. And he said, the interesting thing about adding it to the town ballot, most citizens particularly said, we've got a lot to cover. Truthful matters, it is. They continue to sort of find ways and engineer methods. So the, the point being that it would be amazing and powerful for us as a town to say that we're not satisfied with sort of this action item. That would be my appeal.
Thank you. Okay, so this is open comments. This is, this is not typically an agenda item. We don't typically go to a lot of questions and other things because we want the public to be aware. But I do, I'm probably in correspondence that you sent everything in, and now we have some language to take a look at. See how you respond. So I appreciate it and.
So can I have another question?
Will we be allowed to do a question, Jim? I think, yep. All right, go for it.
What would be the right way to get rid of this contamination?
That's a great question.
Is there one?
No, there isn't. It's the best of the worst option. There are only three. It's either pour it into the bay, in Plymouth's case, in particular, evaporation, or a ship it. There's a town of West Texas. There's a town of West Texas that's agreed to accept the, the toxic waste. What Holtech says is there's great jeopardy in the shipping, but there's never been a singular act, shipping accident in the history of the nuclear industry in, in the United States. So that's not a good option either, because I suspect the townspeople in that town would be like, oh, thank you, we won't take your toxic waste. However, that's, that's the only good answer of the bad answers.
Thank you. Next, sir. So you did, did you have a?
I did. I had a procedural question. So this would be on the ballot, and it is a select board vote to put it on the ballot? Or could you petition to have it on the ballot? How many different? It's, okay, so this couldn't be where a citizen petitioned to put something on that. I was like, looking at section eighteen A super quickly on the state's non-binary public advisory, but I couldn't wait.
I've never seen it before.
Okay.
Somebody petitioned, so it's really.
No, it's, it would be a vote, okay. It's thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days, fine.
Prior to vote. Thirty-five days. Yeah, that's in here. Thirty-five days preceding such election. Five vote of the town. Okay.
I'm only aware of one instance where a petition could put a question on the ballot.
Okay.
Now we have our dates, well.
Yeah, that's what I, the only thing I was concerned about. Do we have the time and the ability to do this?
Nice lunch.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, sorry.
I'm the, I'm behind the curtain, so I'm not.
There you are.
I would, Mr. Chair, I would, if we could get it on an agenda so that we could have a vote in a town meeting matter about whether to put it on the ballot, I would appreciate that. And I also just wanted to note that, you know, this is, this is an extremely important, I mean, there's lots of important issues. And what's notable about this is that I just want to thank Kevin for not taking his eye off this ball, because we're so concerned with operations day to day. And having you remind us of the importance of this is, we really, I, I just really appreciate. Because, you know, we're a coastal town and we have an obligation to do what we can to protect that environment. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Excellent. Well said. Thank you. Matt, any other walk-ins? One more walk-in. For Town Mr. Air.
Good evening. Stop the water treatment plant. We continue to do full work, rebar, installation, substrates, utilities, and concrete cores. We're getting, we're just about done the foundation of the building. I mean, in a couple of weeks and after that, we'll start seeing steel going up. So even when you actually start seeing construction of the building, currently on time, on budget, so those are a good thing. Contractors making inroads on Jericho Road, Lighthouse Turner and Jericho Road seawalls, cutting out some sections and be driving some steel into them and putting new pieces back and repairing that section seawall. Central Police Department, so they gave blood drive in memory of dispatcher Jimmy McCaffrey this Saturday, March twenty ninth, from eight AM to two thirty PM at the Public Safety Center. Meetings are recommended. They will take walk-ins as they can. And the thank you donators will receive a ten dollar Target gift card from the Kraft Family Blood Donors Center. On the same lines, the Dana Faber Mammography van will be at Saint Luke's on Thursday, March twenty seventh, from seven AM to three fifteen PM. Pre-registration is required. Go to the town website and go to the health page. If you have a link, you sign up for that. Nancy has informed me that the Commonwealth has announced that FY twenty-five, fair share of portionment of forty-five million dollars is available and ready for immediate use. This is additional chapter ninety funding that is distributed to City and Towns for roadwork. Town Citro will receive an additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Annual special town meetings will be held on Monday, April fourteenth, seven o'clock in the City High School gym. The annual special town meeting warrants are posted on the website. The advisory committee booklet will be posted later on this week. The state has informed us that beginning April fourteenth, they'll be doing paving work, repairs and upgrades at the Jericho State Boat Ramp. We don't have the details of that yet. As soon as we have them, we will pass those along. Situate Historic Commission is developing historic preservation plan for the town and seeking feedback from the community. There's a link on the town website to take and anticipate in the plan, preservation plan. I'll help create a roadmap of historic preservation in Situate. Input is greatly appreciated. It only takes a couple of minutes and the poll will close on April fifteenth. Finally reminded that the Water Resource Commission is hosting the annual rain barrel sale you have until this Sunday, March thirtieth, to register for an April twelfth pickup date. It'll be placed at the Great American Rain Barrel website, greatamericanrainbarrel.com backslash community. Select Massachusetts then Situate from the drop-down menus. If you're interested in buying a composter, you can go through the Water Smart Program from the North South River Watershed Association. You can buy the rain barrel and the poster, composter, and pick those up April twenty-sixth at the North South River Watershed office on South Street in Noah. The board will be voting tonight to make final the Saturday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five annual election. Nomination papers are now available. If you wish to run, you need to go to the town clerk's office. Candidates need one hundred certified signatures with registered voters of the town, and the deadline is Friday, April eleventh, to turn those papers back in. Central Food Pantry continues to see increase in clients. The deeply indebted are extremely grateful for the community's assistance. New most needed items, pasta box sides, hamburger helper and noirs, rice pilaf, canned pasta with meat, microwave popcorn, beef stew, white tuna, quick bread mix, spam, jog pasta sauce, and tomato sauce. These can be dropped off to the food pantry during operating hours on the bench behind the old gates. Central Library Village Market and Shaws also collect for the food pantry. And finally reminded, the golf course is not closed for walkers. It proves again, the golf course ready for the opening for the summer season. We expect the golf course to be open hopefully later on this week, early next week, weather dependent. So if you want to walk on the golf course, you can wait a couple of days, bring your clubs and chase a little white ball. That's what I have for tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
What's?
All right, good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, what?
Yeah?
More to ask?
Jaking her head, all right. I know, I was, I know. Out of sight. All right. With that, we'll move on to our first scheduled item, poll hours. How are you?
Hi, happy spring.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. So I went back in time and I looked at the, you know, balancing and ballot questions where potentially to mark voter participation on election day and contested ballots. And we did the poll hours back then, eight to six, maybe even sixteen. So that's what I'm basing my request on, is that we can open at eight AM and close at six PM. That's it. Jim had mentioned all the nomination papers available. You can get your signatures in by April eleventh. Call my office if anybody's interested in running. Vote registration deadlines for the May thirty-first town election. If you are not already registered in Situate, it's May twenty-first until five PM in my office. So town elections, I just want to put it up there for town elections. The deadline for candidates to withdraw from the ballot is April twenty ninth. So that is just a little bit more than a month away from the election. So at five PM, at five oh one, I call my venue and say, go with it. And then they print the absentee ballot slash early voting ballots. And I usually have them in a week. So I'm estimating that we will have the ballots for in-person voting absentee in my office if you can't make it to the polls. Hopefully by May fifth. And you can call me before you come in to vote to make sure I have the ballots. We have absentee voting in person and also vote by mail. That's early voting, okay, but by mail. We don't have the staff out in the hall reading the way they're going. Of course, it makes different for local elections. We can opt in, but I choose not to request that. It just requires extra staff and extra money. So that being said, it is a tighter window to get the absentee early voting ballots in my office ready to be voted. What was the other thing I should say? I think that's it. So, oh, or absentee, that's what I was gonna say, absentee ballot and goes, anytime, once I have the ballots, I'll put it out there that we have them and you can come in and vote. It goes into, that statewide goes until noon the day before every election. So it gets cut off exactly at noon and vote by mail is up until five business days before the election. So come back to Monday before the May thirty-first election. That's the deadline that you can request a ballot now. I ask people not to wait till the last minute. You can request a ballot now and I'll get them out as soon as I get them. However, the mail goes to Brockton first. Anytime you mail something in Situate, doesn't matter where, it goes to Brockton to be processed and then comes back to Situate. So please be diligent in getting your requests and I'm asking the voters out there, if you want a mail ballot, go into the portal, I'm in the town website right now, went to government, go into town court, you have a big red banner at the top of my page. It says, election information. In the attachments, there is a vote by mail application. Fill it out and drop it off. Don't put it in there. Drive right up to the ballot box up front and throw it in there. We check it every day. Or just come in when it's time and vote absentee. You don't wipe out and you can make it.
Eight to six.
Yeah.
Ms. Campfield, thoughts, questions, anything? Good.
Well, it sounds like there may be a couple of contested.
Vote will know April eleven.
Right.
And actually, we won't. We won't go until like the twenty ninth or something across.
Right. But, but the point is, is that when there are contested elections, more people tend to.
Yeah, and, and ballot questions. So that's why I was glad it passed elections, just to do more detail and stuff. Yeah.
All right. All right, oh, we're on. Yeah, let's take a motion.
Move to set the poll hours from eight AM to six PM. The annual town election will be held on Saturday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five at the Situate High School Gymnasium located at six oh six Chief Justice Cushing Way.
Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Harrison. Roll call vote.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Conley.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
And you now have a loss.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a hawker and another license. Robert. Say our chief there? Am I saying that right?
That's Tuesday.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Robert Tuzik, sixty-four, circle one, well. Reason I'm here today is to apply my hogging and peddlers. Just a little backstory. Last year, I created a small business called Temperance, which is a food truck making eapol and salad pizza, and a wood-fired oven and I serve desserts, soft drinks, and John Alpro beverages. Small deals, John Alpro beers and wines. Did numerous events at Untold last year, and actually was at the Situate Parade, St. Patrick's Day Parade this past weekend at the starters line. And I guess I'm applying for any of the public spots that are available, which I, I was told were the beach areas. But I did want to specifically ask if there were any areas, and I'm using this word, I don't know if it's right, but the wharf area, three hundred yards away from any business that I could, that I could pop up downtown. I guess that's what I'm asking the board, if, if there are such, if that's even easy.
The, that's a, that's a good question. I think, Shari or Jim, we have, so you have the fishing pier.
Yeah, yeah, like, so, so for, when I drive by before I go down to go to the lighthouse, like after the liquor store, there's that, there's the parking area where all the fishing boats are. That's, that's why I consider the wharf.
Right.
I don't know if I'm correct or not. But I know that in the past, like, and I'm only using this as an example, like Ms. Emily's food truck, which I know serves seafood, and I think maybe it's because the boats are there. And I didn't know if that was, if that, they own the, the real estate. I wasn't quite sure, or if that was public property, you know. So were there readings in the summer where I could pop up and make pizzas? So Jim, what, what's the?
It's Thomas Pier. We only let Ms. Emily down, not the other food trucks down. We want to make it available. I think somebody who has funds to object to those being down there. Because they have, they're getting more of this. That's why they don't really object for the, the peaches. Ms. Emily, I think, just because no one's known to play down there. They didn't have a big objection. And he has such a small menu, basically lobster rolls and fish and chips, so.
The boat, right?
Yeah, it's both.
It's both, yeah.
So I don't think, you can, but I don't think the merchants would be.
Because that's technically, what's the, how many yards it's too close to the restaurant, right?
Well, it's probably technically.
It's technically three hundred because T K is kind of closest.
Well, there's Lucky Finnis actually.
Lucky Finnis, I.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and in no way am I trying to, like, the last thing I want to do is upset any of the local businesses in Situate. I'm actually just trying to become part of the community and find out where I could be. You know, like, this motivated me to do this in the first place, to see these in the oven that they have, right? So it's like, I don't want to really, like, upset anybody.
What's the deal, what's the Little League fields?
That's where I'm going selfishly.
Because if you're looking at this page where other people are, the crosswords sandwiches are definitely a little.
They've never, I mean, I've never seen them at Roach or, sorry, at Fruit Boys down there. They live there in the summer.
Okay. My understanding, too, was that they literally had approached sandwich, probably sandwich about it. So that's how that agreement kind of came about.
You're the retro party.
Would you be open to one of those songs?
I would. I mean, like, would, would there be some type of, like, one of the things that I'm doing in, in various towns, I actually just came from an inspection day today with all the various food trucks and so short. It's because in, in any given Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, in the summer, I'm doing a food truck, maybe in various towns. So I'd love to, like, maybe start something in Situate. Maybe that could be a spot, if it's one truck or maybe many. It, it's something that these towns seem to be growing, except, you know, it seems to be growing acceptance to, because it's offering community and kids.
Right, yeah, slice of pizza.
Slice of pizza.
I'm sorry, Matt. Yes, Ms. Campfield, there you are.
Sorry, sorry not to be in the room so I could throw things, but the, the sort of tension between the benefits of a food truck and our community, a lot of it has to do with limited parking. So, you know, we've got the various beach parking lots, that sort of thing. If six trucks showed up, even though that, you know, we got one, two, three, four, that in theory could, so if five trucks show up, we start thinking about worrying about parking. And I know you would coordinate with people so that you guys would maximize your attention. So the other piece of it is a lot of the food truck presence in our community is on private property. So a lot of the businesses will bring in pop-up food trucks that is completely off our tape. Like, we don't have anything to do with that, because of, you know, Untold brings somebody in three times a week, different food trucks, that kind of stuff. I have no problem with the Little League fields or any of the, the public lots that we own. But I just want to be mindful that we don't get in a, like, that the vendors are coordinating so that we're not squeezing out parking because it's such a commodity here. So I would just say for the board, you know, it's a great fit for the town. We don't have something in that, you know, this would be a balance to the other trucks that are in town. And you're right, it's popular. People love it. But we got to figure out a balance that's equitable, but you know, respects that parking crunch.
No, I understand the issues. And I, I think to be clear about the Ms. Emily is that they're serving, as Gina says, a limited menu, plus they're closed at, at four, five o'clock, right?
I was even reluctant to bring up the name of my blog.
They're not, no, no, it's, it's there.
It says here, eight to eleven.
But, but, but I'm talking about Lucky Fin. Lucky Fin is closed at like four, five.
Yeah, no.
So you're not competing with Lucky Fin for the lobster roll if after four o'clock.
Correct.
That's my.
You're right.
Sometimes. Not all.
You're really right.
Occasionally.
But yeah, I mean, I'm more than happy to add in, if you're, just want to talk to the Little League folks, because again, I've never seen a truck. They sometimes, you know, they'll have kids selling stuff, like, so they can go to Coopers Town, so like, you know, but they never have actual.
That would be good.
And same, you can talk, I mean, private, same areas as a field there, but, so do you want to be comfortable adding in Little League fields and just coordinate?
And then I have one other question. All of the others, not, I'm not, to you, Shari. Based on consistency, all the other ones say year round. And this says April first to December thirty.
That's what he had asked.
Yeah, I didn't know what to put in to be quite honest with you. That, that was a question that I actually had, like, regarding some of these public spaces, like Peggy Beach, like, the, the hours are safe, like, just say there was a window, say eleven to seven. Who would I notify as to, like, all right, can I go on that date? And would there be another truck that could possibly be there somewhere in the interim?
It's usually tough. I mean, sure, I remember Rump, but they usually coordinate.
The trucks coordinate with each other. We don't order on any of the coordination of where you guys are when you're going to be there, so that's.
So, okay.
We'll provide.
It's a long nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can provide you the contacts of all, of the other trucks so that you can, and we'll try your contact to that.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
And the board approves.
Yeah, of course, of course.
And year round, do they?
Well, my only, my only thought was consistency, right? My, I thought consistent and then didn't they, didn't they come in? But Danny and Ms. Emily came in and asked for year round, so like these, you might get a good evening or there's additional.
fundraiser or something.
Day or maybe, you know.
I didn't think I was going to be doing events in December last year. And I, December fourteenth, that was from the Winter Carnival. So it's your point. Yeah.
I would suggest we, we, we give you a year round for consistency and also it is so temperate and, and it's up to you. You don't have to, obviously. If it's not worth it for you to get the truck up and running, but it gives you that flexibility.
And we want to be equitable, equitable, right? Okay.
I'll get to say it sometime. Sometime tonight. So do we limit the number of trucks at, say, let's just pick Peggy Beach, so that we don't have six trucks down there?
We only have four trucks.
Well, it's just a number. I mean, so they're allowed six hours in town. Okay. But for the food trucks. What? What?
I'm sorry, that's the issue, right? We, we don't, and we don't get involved in all of that. The practice has been for the food trucks, because, I mean, I know Paul, you're, you're not from, your temperance, temperance is not far from us, but the three existing ones are all local businesses that all. So, you know, I think that's something for the board to consider down the road, but right now, we haven't had a need to, because the businesses sort of self-regulate that.
I think we just got to do this, it's very well. I, I don't see any complexity required here.
So we're, I'm comfortable going in here and then. Yeah.
I feel like we should facilitate it.
Yeah, because like psycho football, and then you might have to go, who knows? All right, I'll take the motions. We're going year round and we're adding in Little League fields, Mr. Gilmore.
Move to a booth. New hawker and peddle license for Robert.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Order of Temperance LLC for the following locations, Peggy Beach, Egypt Beach, Maya Beach, Lighthouse, and Ballfields?
Sure.
Hours of operation, Thursdays through Sundays, eleven AM to eight PM, year round.
All right, move by. Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Liz Harrison. Roll call.
Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you. You now have a solid favor.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I very appreciate it. I look forward to working on all.
Came up to try it. I did think we should have.
My son had some of the praise. He was very good.
He smelled good.
He's a really good.
It's going to be a new policy. People have to bring in some nice flights of samples.
I'm learning, I'm learning, I'm learning the ropes.
First your time. There's your time.
The less, the more.
Yeah, it's less pizza.
For everybody that smelled good, all that.
Yeah. Beautification committee is up next, adopt a lot. So Casey, I am a books liaison, but I'm terrible. I've not been, but there are the best.
I was getting really buzzed tonight, Mr. Goodrich, but I didn't want to embarrass you.
They run, they know what they're doing. So we are in good hands.
So Sue is going to do the presentation about this, but I also wanted to let everyone know that the shipshape day dot org website is up and running. And um, also listening to food trucks, uh, with all the trash, uh. And there was a lot of trash last year that was sometimes related to the food trucks, so I hope that they are going to garbage them.
Yes.
So, uh, the last thing that I want to say is that both Sue and Mary Ann Palato have been working on. Uh, developing a new signage um, uh, system for uh, the beautification commission. Uh, Mary Ann Palato has stepped out from the commission, and Sue has finished up the project.
Should I read this to you, because I'm, we're talking to the town, this, this proposal?
Yeah, I do, yeah, I do, the Reader's Digest.
So the beautification has requested um, approval to purchase signs, new adopt a lot signs, um. Current trust has nine thou, from the trust fund, the current fund has nine thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars ninety cents. Funding for the new signage will be between. See, it's, I almost went wrong, but um, a lot of money, um. One thousand four hundred and forty dollars between that and uh, one thousand nine hundred and twenty. Um, that was depending on what the commission voted on. For between thirty-five and forty signs, those are all the adopt a lots. Um, so the past four years, we've discussed the need for new signage, here take a seat, the needs do not match the volunteers. Just that different signs, seeing what different volunteers are. Many signs are close to the ground, are not useful to the plantings. Our current signage does not reflect and or coordinate with the new signage um, in town. And the commission hopes that new signage will stand out and attract the volunteers. So we investigated signage um, in other towns, as well as commercial available signage in the, um, on the internet and at local stores. Our commission wanted to attract, wanted an um, attractive oval sign, not too large, a sign that would pick up the teeth from the town's new signage. Uh, we extensively examined the cost of a new uh, design and manufacturing, we were able to find a local situet artist. Paul Cartley, who has a business sign, maybe, one shop in Brooklyn. He's familiar with situet signage and understands our needs, he had to came before our board to discuss um, some options. The oval um, eight by twelve sign will be manufactured out of aluminum. Known for its excellent corrosion resistance, it will be fastened to a um, metal stake. Um, that's one by one, um, aluminum, and um, the price is approximately twenty-five dollars um, per sign. So we've enclosed, I played around with a new logo, but we were asked by the town to stick with. The current logo that's on a new signage. But me being the difficult one, um, we wanted, we actually eliminated it because we thought it was too busy by having a lighthouse. Um, and the cliff and the boat. So we stayed with colors. So presently, this is not the sign, um, the current idea is to put adopt a lot. Here, large, and then beautification at five.
Right.
So the thing that we would see in coming through town, our, our visitors, would be adopt a lot, so.
Is what we're looking at now, exactly.
Exactly, so what, what we don't, we've agreed that we don't care for is the. Beautification and being so large, we want to make that smaller like this one. Um, so, do you want to?
Pretty bad.
Yeah, we love paying some kind of thing.
So, the most important question for anything with this is, how, how many more volunteers would you love to have?
Well, we could use a lot of volunteers.
Including you, Andrew.
I will adopt a lot.
Yeah, that's on public record.
Like that.
It's on public record, I'll send a thirteen-year-old.
We, um, he has a work crew.
Yeah, you have fruit boys, I'll send them out.
We feel very fortunate that the town has been so supportive of our mission. And I think that um, it's always nice to have extra caring hands, to have fun intended to help out with um, digging the dirt. And we've had some volunteers recently that have donated um, pansies, some actually that going.
Yeah, Doug has helped me um, planting pansies in several million adopt a lots, and he has been providing the beautification commission with. His pansies, and Miss Pansies are very gorgeous and healthy and strong, can withstand everything.
Sounds like Doug.
So we, um, yeah, and we're working now with the town, um, downtown, um, front street. To kind of work on some of those planters that haven't kind of been neglected and so.
And you're also planning to start um, bringing plants uh, as a welcome to uh, new businesses.
Really?
A welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah.
Chairman. So the visual that we have before us in the situet type script is what you're going to create?
That is correct.
Maybe the, excuse me, the word beautification are going to make it a little bit smaller.
That is correct.
I'm, I'm a favorite of that.
Yeah.
How many volunteers did you want to have? Because I don't think you actually answered that.
Well, we, we, we always love volunteers that are going to help with um, the adopt a lots.
The work.
And we also would love to have commissioners, particularly if they have a computer, um, that they can uh.
At high school.
Take minutes.
You have to send the kids to the center.
Well, yes, it's hard, you know, so, so the folks who have computers are not as many as we wish, so um.
All right, so you need some computer help, and we're going to get ten, ten new volunteers.
There you go.
Okay.
It's on record now.
We are, we're all trying to find two folks.
I, I do have a question, are they one-sided signs?
Yes, they are.
So sometimes, depending on the lot, would you need perhaps two signs? So for example, if you're coming in out of the harbor, I mean, I'm just thinking aloud, but.
Yeah.
Um, if you're leaving, you might want to see it, you're coming in, you might want to see it, I'm just, just being.
Yeah, we'll have to determine a placement, especially if it's a larger.
Not every lot is big enough.
They're not going in the river crossings.
No, they're, they're not, they're, they're only for the adopt a lots, and usually, there, there is um.
Yes, I understand.
Uh, there are plantings that would be in back of, of this, so, but it's a very good thing to mention, though, so we will keep an eye on that.
Always, yeah.
Good, that's good. Then Karen is all set, all safe, take the motion. I love it, again.
Who has a question, Mr. Chair?
Oh, sir.
Is the funding, is the funding request coming from the existing beautification budget, I wasn't clear on that.
Yes.
It's coming from the um.
Trust.
Trust fund.
From the trust fund, okay, and you're no longer anticipating naming, you know, saying the Andrew Goodrich family lot anymore? It's just going to be the.
Right.
Adopt a lot, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so we won't have the name of the volunteers added to this, because people change too much, and we can't afford to keep them changing.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, yep, thank you.
Moved to approve new signage for adopt a lot using funds from the beautification trust fund. For thirty-five to forty signs in the amount of one thousand four hundred and forty to one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So, Ms. Conley, roll call.
Mr. Gil, Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Hi.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campell.
Yes.
Thank you, now my phone favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Agent folks.
Still like this, too.
More logos.
Right. Or, oh, geez, we now have a discussion of the work contract to the uh, John G. Wade Associates for certain plan development. Of the beautiful Mordenheim Lincoln property. Geez, how are you?
Doing well, thank you, thanks for having me back. Uh, we can go to the next slide, please, Seth. So the overview and the context on this proposal is, first of all, I'd like to thank CPC and of course the town for allocating the funding for this. So this is based on funding seventy-five thousand dollars via CPC. Uh, the RFP, the request for proposal, had three key deliverables to help us with our strategic planning, what to do with this beautiful site. Uh, the first key element was to perform a historical and structural assessment of the mill. We call it the mill, some call it the barn, and the main house, including prioritized cost estimates for recommended next steps. This is critical for us to have a rigorous understanding of prioritizing the future requests. The second key deliverable is to assist in the compilation completion of a nomination to get this property on the national register of historic places. This is more than symbolic, this is a key enabler of down-the-road funding. Uh, so uh, we'd like to get as much funding from other sources other than just the town. And this is a key prerequisite, so we need some help in getting that application together. And then finally, uh, we want somebody who has experience in developing master plans, long-range plans, you know, their living plan, but to have some sort of longer-term roadmap. Help us uh, build on this over time. So we had a, a good amount of interest from more than four firms that actually formally responded, some as far away as Utah, and others that may not have made any sense. Uh, four firms formally responded, three of the four firms within our budget target. Uh, and we have an aligned recommendation from our committee to discuss here next, next slide, Seth. Uh, subcommittee was formed, and I'd like to thank Jody, who is, I think, here, and Alex, and Jim Glensky, join myself in doing a deep dive in these proposals. We did both a quantitative and a qualitative evaluation, uh, the rating system, the numeric system. Uh, evaluated each firm on their approach to overall project management, the approach, and then the three, their response to the three specific deliverables. We didn't want to be a slave to these numeric systems that guide, and so we also wanted to do a qualitative assessment. And that included intangibles like their creativity, their initiative, and communication, because we did have some back and forth with each firm. Tested how they might be to work with. And then we conducted live via Zoom interviews with each of the companies. Uh, the recommendation, after going through that process, is to propose that we ask for John G. Wade Associates to carry this work forward. They had what we believe to be the strongest, uh, what they refer to in the industry refers to as a conditions assessment report. This is literally and figuratively foundational in everything we do downstream, so they have an excellent track record in these types of assessments. And it is both architectural, structural, as well as historic. They have an extremely impressive uh, portfolio of projects. Uh, including a number in the Massachusetts and South Shore all the way down to uh, to uh, the Cape. So they have a strong regional presence. We were particularly impressed with their proposed lead focal point of contact, as you know as well as I. Who you work with more than the name of the firm makes all the difference in the world, and there we contacted a woman by the name of Nancy Graniken, who was just outstanding. Took the initiative to come and do a site visit on her own, uh, initiative and nickel. And uh, was very thorough in doing that assessment, and that's a good, strong indicator of both experience and professionalism. They were also unique in providing in their approach a full site perspective, this is a beautiful site in addition to these historic structures. And so although there's a conservation protection, uh, I think it's a CR, is the formal name, to protect the uh, the outdoor space outside of a certain footprint. There is a lot of water flow and some other things with regards to. Access to the various structures, right now, we've done some work on the driveway and some things, and so we really need to make sure we find a way to get people from one. Structure to another as part of this plan, they were very proactive in addressing that piece. They put together a, a realistic and uh, robust timeline for the work. And they were appropriately cautionary about the actual timeline for getting on the historic registry. There are a few things going on at the national level that you may or may not be paying attention to, that could cause few uh, speed bumps in that particular area. That won't get in the way necessarily of our application, but the actual formal approval could uh, drag on a bit, and they were managing expectations appropriately there. And of course, uh, importantly, they came in on the budget. Next slide. So uh, pending your approval, uh, we'd like to then complete the formal award process, and I'd like to thank Nancy, who's been an outstanding shepherd and guide throughout this process. Next step, sort of, onward with Nancy and some others, and then get on with the formal virtual kickoff meeting. And begin building our, our core uh, project management, other site structures. So in summary, a robust process was used for proposals received, we have an aligned recommendation from our committee to award this contract to John G. Wade Associates. And we're excited to award, of course, pending your approval. I think Nancy developed the official uh, E A R, the excellent hearing. I don't know if it's here on a slide.
No, they are.
So, any questions on the process or the recommendation?
Oh, I, I do not have questions, just thank you, um, I have appreciated working with the Mordenheim team, um, and I see them on plenty of faces here. I thought they did a very thorough job with uh, the proposals that we received and the evaluation of this.
Is there a plan within this plan communicating with the public about this? Or is it strictly, and I, I do understand the difference with expertise in architectural, landscape architecture, architecture, et cetera. That this isn't necessarily asking people what they want, but what is the actual, what are the actual conditions? So I guess my question would be, what might the public and please more expect in terms of um, communications?
Yeah, it's a great question, and it's one that uh, we've thought a lot about, because we did an initial survey. That generated strong, I'll call it general support, the direction that we're proposing. But so many of the pieces of feedback we've, we've received were, well, I don't know exactly what I'm signing up for, and there's costs, and some other trade-offs and other options. So to answer your question, as part of the development of the long-range plan element of this, there is specifically an idea to gain, re-engage the town. And of course, to select and work along in the journey to get input before we come forward with our formal recognition. And the timing of this is critical, because uh, we needed that timeline confidence to get this work done in the artist's timeframe, because we wanted to be ready to get. The next, you know, budgeting window opportunity that's uh, out of us, so that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Karen, you?
No, I think, thank you so much for your leadership, it's been uh, really great to watch how your committee has really come together to move this forward, so, nope, I think it's great.
I have no, no questions, I just would remark on the credentials and the variety of projects this firm has successfully accomplished, most impressive. I have to underscore most impressive, and anybody from Rensselaer, quality, thank you, is on my goodness. So you'll have no objection.
No conflict there.
We were so impressed that we were uh, planning to make sure we saw some, some smaller projects, because they also did such impressive large projects, and of course, their portfolio did in fact include, you know, the full range of activities, but it is a very impressive.
Yeah, that's all I was gonna highlight, I think it could be, if you Google the Edith Warren House, and what actually is what? Unbelievable. Unbelievable, and you see the before and after, and then just great articles about well, the teamwork and everything that happened. So, it's always great when you can actually see the work. It does sort of support, so, great. I'll take a motion.
Move that the select board award the contract to John G. Weight Associates for the historical planning and development of the Mordecai Lincoln property in the amount of seventy thousand and fifty dollars.
Second, Mr. Gilmore, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Hi.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a song there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help. Love it. Right. Next on our agenda, discussing about a special event Patriots' Day, two-hundred-and-fifty year anniversary. How's Jen? How are you?
Good, yo.
How's you? They have to get that, yeah.
Okay, so because this is generally, I approve special event permits, well, because this is a new special event. You want to have the board to be aware of what's going on, then you have to commit to you. When they do the five hundred, probably we'll put that.
After seven two-hundred and fifty years.
Fair enough, all right.
It's Robert's deal.
A little bit of bother.
All right.
Cituit, was he?
Thank you.
Say that at least.
Yes.
This is from all who we're working with who want a situation.
Unlike Concord and Lexington, Norwell and Cituit are working closely together, so.
They're fighting with their army?
Oh, I hadn't read about that. They're fighting over.
The shock fight around the world, that's Concord's claim to fame, but the actual first shot was like a bit, not a big one. Having a little.
Where did the first battle occur?
Far enough away.
Where now, where did it occur?
Well, I know, but I have to be dead people, and I think they're common. That's pretty good, Seth.
So, this is a pretty cool event, and Cituit, well, at the time stepped up big time immediately, two-hundred-and-twelve people all kid. And Cituit and Norwell at the time, eighty percent of the men in sixteen and sixty years as they volunteered in a total of around five hundred and, how many did?
Well, two-hundred-and-twelve from Cituit and Norwell. Yeah, right, but then I forget that.
Well, Norwell was part of Cituit.
Norwell was Cituit, yeah, so.
And then they were actually inbound?
They were, actually, they were mustering, is what's been wrote into the town. So, what?
There were men in units, and there were regular militia, it was different. I don't want to go in there.
Or no, no, I think your point is, yeah, there's only a thousand people, you're twenty-five percent of the town.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, percentage of.
Uh, one to five hundred. And outside of Boston, there's one of the largest militia, we've got it, millions, companies and militia, Marchville, Harrison, as one, but more than only of surrounding cells or accounts.
Should have known that, that's more than I remembered, no. Sorry, but that.
So, it would be a shame to not let this event get recognized. I felt it was starting a revolutionary work. And so, and we had a unique opportunity here, because Cituit militia man, Israel Lichfield, kept a diary, it's one of the most important diaries in the people studying the American Revolution, kept it from November seventeen seventy-four through the end of seventeen seventy-five. We got a great look at what was happening, not just in the militia and finding that this is daily life of things that were happening in Cituit, but during the weeks surrounding this beginning of war, we get a very unique opportunity to see what was happening almost hour by hour. Those four or five days, even, I think, two weeks around the first start of the war. Israel was Cituit, the sergeant, the shooting. So, the event, to give you a brief summary. So, it's a joint event by Norwell and Cituit Historical Societies in the morning, eleven o'clock. The event will take place in Norwell, and it focuses around a play, a short play, twenty-five, thirty minutes, written by Wendy Bawave, who is the president of the Norwell Historical Society. And she took some of the things in my book, and some of the things from Israel Lichfield's diary, and put this play together. Are you in the play? I am not in the play. There will be fourteen actors, some professionals and some amateurs. And they will play, they will be in the audience most of the time, a couple of, never get up and speak in front of the whole world. But basically, it's, they'll be in the audience. And people who come to the play are encouraged to dress in costume. And it'll also be given a character card when they walk in with a quick reference to who the character that they're going to pay attention to represent in the seating, so they can boo at the Tories, if they're Patriots, they can boo at the Patriots if they're a Tory, that kind of thing. It's trying to get people that engage, who shall come on after the play is over. The Hino militia, six of them coming, and they'll be around during the, before the play starts, people come in, people want to get a photo op or just talk to the militia man, and then after the play is over, they're going to give a salute to the militia man who served, or granted the call on April twenty. And I don't know whether they're going to do it in Norwell, I think they're going to do it right across from First Parish Church, but we're going to go until the common, Lawson Common, and fire off a few, I don't know, muskets. And then, what Cituit Historical Studies is going to offer.
Well, after the event at the church, we're going to open up Lawson Tower. And then, we actually have in the current brand, a coach that Lafayette wrote in when he came back from Pacific Park, which has been refurbished, we're going to bring that up, when we have Chief Justice, this you say. So, we'll bring that out, and people can walk Lawson Tower, they can get the coaches, and go to Lawson Park where they're gun-stalling. If it doesn't rain, it'll be great.
Keeping our fingers crossed.
So, it's, Wendy did a really good job, and Jim's book is awesome. I think Cituit really deserves to be pat in the back for what they did. She's number fifty years, yeah?
And there's eight more years of American Revolution, so there'll be another event.
Yeah, that's true, that's right.
For sure, yeah. So, that's Jim's book, if you haven't seen it.
It'll be on sale today.
Advanced copies, different today.
It's also in the archive, if you want to borrow it.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
It's in the library, too.
I mean, so, this is just, hey, I've already learned so much, it's not both fun and educational, wonderful. Obviously, you know, working with police and fire, and you have to make sure everything is all, everything, as you always do for these folks, but that's.
And what's cool is it's free.
It's free, that's a great, I love that price.
Same is limited, so, you know, if you're really, or whatever, but it is free.
Ms. Campbell, love that. Did you raise your hand at that, or no? Questions, concerns?
No, I think it's great. I, you know, I've, I know that the state is trying to look for opportunities to fund things to commemorate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. So, if you haven't available yourself with some of those tourism grants for promotion, they might be able to support. I know we don't have much time, but it might be worth looking for some of that, too. So, this is awesome.
I think we're covered, but if you want to wear a colonial costume, you know. Oh, that's a thumbs up, yeah. Because someone did, they'll have to plot, and some of the, we're even.
Well, I just want to suggest that rain or shine, people come, because I think there's a phrase about sunshine patriots, and we don't want just sunshine patriots, do we? So, no matter what the weather is, I hope plenty of people show up. The Hino militia was at the lighthouse.
They're awesome, yeah.
The relighting ceremony, and they're awesome.
They really are, yeah.
I mean, it's really amazing, you should be, like, you're talking to someone from seventeen seventy-five. So, yes, it's a wonderful, we're lucky to be able to celebrate all these months each year. So, thank you to the Historical Society.
So, a lot of this little stuff that's happened in Cituit.
I also want to just give, plug Jim's book about water. He wrote a book about water in Cituit, and the eternal search for water.
Yes.
It's looking, it's about searching, and we're still looking for water.
And you wrote about the fire.
So, thank you, Jim.
Now, we've got the vote, and questions, concerns? Since I'd like to express my appreciation, this is the legacy of our great town in Norwell, when Norwell was even Cituit. And the more we can educate everybody, the younger generations, as to why we all still live here, I think it's great, and I think it's going to be a wonderful day, rain or shine. I expect to see good turnout. Thank you.
Yeah, for motion, I would just mention, in case there happens to be anyone from WATD or the press here that may want to speak to one of these fine gentlemen, lay out about this break, that'd be lovely, in case, in case there's someone to be back.
Sure.
Uh, good a half.
With a hat, too.
Wendy and I, Wendy and I also already had a radio interview with Christine James last week. And she is going to actually read the names of the two-hundred-plus militia. She's great, she's the best.
As you come into the church before the play starts, she's recorded this already, it's going to be from a moment back, it's great. So, that's how a ton of the.
Love it, love it. All right, take a motion, sounds great, and thank you for helping out.
Yeah, move to approve a new special event of Cituit Reacts Patriots' Day, two-hundred-and-fifty year celebration on Monday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, from one to three P.M. at First Parish Church, Lawson Common and Lawson Tower.
Seth, say it like Ms. Conley, or whoever, vote, although.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Hi.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
And you, and I'm a song there.
You and I.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, before you let him go.
Yes.
If you haven't seen the new town report with the beautiful picture of the restored lighthouses, for all his high work, the town report is dedicated this year to Mr. Chessier.
I think this is going to be embarrassing while you're there. I get a call, I'm sitting in this class, two months to see the town hall, my son said it. I was trying to, I worked with a lot of American founding people, and we got it.
Yeah, make sure the, I think the eighth grade, the high school, the Johnson Center project, make sure they know all about it, so make sure the school committee can get that out. Thank you. All right, thank you, well done, well done. Next on our list, we're going to wait two, we're going to let, sooner or come right back, we've got a filibuster. Chad, how are you? Mike?
Good. George here. Oh, wait forever.
So, next on the agenda, it's going to be the Old Gates housing proposal, this is from the Grantham Group. Just going to wait one moment for our whole, maybe to come back, folks to find their seats. Perfect, I will, so, just on the onset for this, too, a couple of things. Number one, there's no vote here tonight, just a presentation, a lot of folks here, we're not voting on anything tonight, this is a presentation for us to listen, and this is not the one and only time we're going to talk about this proposal. We're going to have other public meetings and other talks with that about this topic moving forward, it's such a big issue in the heart of our community. So, with that, now, now that everyone's here, now, make it off with the presentation.
Great, thanks so much. My name's Mike Pichar, I'm with the Grantham Group, and I'd like to thank the board for having us here tonight to present our vision for the Old Gate School. I'm joined tonight by my colleague here, Clay Smoot, who's our architect. Clay's done, been with the Grantham Group for about twenty years, and he's doing projects for us. His work is seeing the Lawson Green apartments across the way, he was the visionary behind that design, that was a unique partnership with the Cituit Housing Authority, began in twenty sixteen. And we've had a wonderful relationship with the town since then. And what I'd like to do right now, actually, is to have Clay go through the design a little bit, and I'll come back, talk to you about specifically the unit matrix, why we're doing what we're doing, why we approached the project this specific way, and talk a little bit about what are considerations, does it make sense?
Yes.
So, my name is.
Pre-picture speaks better than words, okay?
So, my name is Clay Smoot, and Smoot Architecture, been practicing architecture in Massachusetts since nineteen eighty-nine, I know, I know, I don't get that old. And so, we've really, as Michael said, we've been working with the Grantham Group for twenty years. One of the first projects we did is on the bottom left, which is one of the Christopher Heights buildings, it's actually an assisted living, eighty-three beds, about fifty-five thousand square feet. This was built on the old prime root factory, which was a dirty site in Marlboro, it was cleaned up and transferred to, to the Grantham Group, and it was a success. And from that building, we've done a rollout of several other of these on other sites, specifically hospital sites, former hospitals, state hospital sites in Beltratown and Northampton. Above, as you know, Lawson Green, it was a really special project for us, it was an RFP that had been put out, and we responded with this unique design that we had not done anyplace else, really drew on the architecture of surrounding, surrounding buildings in that area. Next. So, with this project, I mean, we took, we took a look at the RFP, we took a look at some of the studies of the adaptive reuse of the existing building. I will tell you, we have, my firm has a pretty strong background in doing adaptive reuse. In this particular instance, we just felt that it would be better, given the current state of the, of the, two things, really, the Massachusetts Building Code and the Energy Code is very, very stringent. That in addition to trying to create the most efficient building possible, given the incredible cost of construction these days, makes adaptive reuse of the existing building very, very difficult and challenging. So, what we are proposing to do is create a replica of that building, being the centerpiece of our new design. As you know, the original building, I believe, was built in the twenties, and then received its sort of landmark pediment, and pilasters, and pitch roof, and additions off the sides, I believe in the thirties. So, we're doing, what we're proposing is to replicate that building in a much more efficient, energy-efficient manner. And so, this here is a sketch of it, and again, we're going to be using for the centerpiece of the project, the original sort of replication, the Old Gate School, we're proposing to clad that in brick. We're talking about a three-story building of about sixty-four thousand square feet. We looked at several iterations of this building, my office, we probably had four or five different master plans for this before we settled on this, both in terms of the architecture and its configuration on the site. I will say that we even looked at a potential four-story version, given the height of the existing building, but found that it would just be too overwhelming for the, for the area. Next slide. So, again, a couple of, as Mike would say, pretty perspectives. Again, the idea is to really replicate and imitate the existing architecture, but using materials that are going to wear better over time. We're talking about, again, the brick on the main building, as well as the wings would be clad in what's called hardy, it's a sanitious siding that really, really holds paint very well, and repels insects, et cetera. Of course, the windows would be all state-of-the-art energy efficient. Next. So, the configuration, which is really interesting, we'll get to the math, the site plan, these slides kind of got reversed, which is fine. The ground floor plan is on the top left, we have, I believe it's about nineteen units on the ground floor and twenty-two on the upper two floors. We're using the same, the tried and true typical one-bedroom unit that we used at Lawson, we found that worked out very, very well. We're using the same, the tried and true typical one-bedroom unit that we used at Lawson. We found that worked out very, very well. So yields a total of sixty-three units that are very efficient, sixty-four thousand square feet. As you can see, this is very, very, very efficient in terms of the partners and the way the modulators, the modules of the units work. Next. So these are some interior design, uh, sketch photographs from, uh, the Lawson Green project, give you a sense of the interior architecture that we're talking about doing for the project. Do you have that master plan piece or no?
Yeah.
I'd really like to get this, yeah, first to this. So I, I think it's really important to take a look at this plan and the way we were able to thread this building. I mean, we've got the senior center on the upper left, we've got the auditorium on the right, that this building sort of threads the needle in getting that sixty-four thousand square feet, between those buildings, creating some pretty interesting spaces and relationships between the auditorium and the new building and the senior center in the new building. We're proposing, obviously there are, there are trees and whatnot that are not, this is not meant to be a, uh, entirely accurate, uh, master plan in terms of locating every single tree on here. We realize there's a very mature trees just above where our building is, we would not be touching those.
Right. And the, the objective here was to keep that program of the Cudworth House and the Historical Society completely untouched by this. And that's kind of why we've come, come up with the design that we have, to separate the new building from the existing recreation wing and also this senior center to have its own program and to not interfere with the other uses on the site.
And refreshment of recollection, I think we did rotate the field, uh, sort of counterclockwise, which really created a much more efficient, uh, layout for parking. We're suggesting parking here, I believe it's between hundred and hundred square spaces. Um, so we're maintaining the senior center parking and of course we're providing parking for our sixty-three, uh, residents. Not every single one of those residents have cars, but we would be accommodating those. So I think this is an important visual and then I, there might be aerial of that as well. Exactly. So here you are looking over the, uh, reconfigured soccer fields, the parking, we create, we really created a celebrate, uh, a really celebratory entrance on this side for vehicular and emergency vehicles to the front of it, which is really, in essence, the front of the building, although the building presents itself, uh, to the. That kind of covers the architecture of it and wasn't happy to go over that. And, you know, these things have developed over time and, and, and I don't want anybody to think that we just sort of birthed this thing. I think there's a lot of, uh, chance for, uh, interaction and discussion among, uh, all stakeholders in this to make this a building and a, and a project that will all be happy with.
Right. So initially we looked at the idea of rehabbing the building and Clay, to Clay's point, you know, the existing layout of the building is three, it's basically three, essentially three different areas of construction, three different levels. An immense amount of environmental remediation needs to occur. There's lots of asbestos. Uh, we had our guys go in there and take a look at, getting some numbers on that. And we put about a million three on the remediation cost if we're to rehab it. The other element was that you get fewer and fewer units. The maximum number of units you can get in the existing building is about thirty-two and several of those units are on the ground floor, subterranean, next to the boiler room. So really unappealing, um, yeah, just, just really, it's, 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 it's sort of sad, but it, it, the way the building lays out, it's just, we've had a lot of challenges. Add to that, the state, uh, energy code effectively would require us to build a building within a building in order to meet the insulation requirements. So you'd either have to frame out an entire new structure within an existing unit or you'd have to go and clad the entire building in like four-inch rigid foam with a metal, uh, or, you know, like colored fiberglass or whatever it would be exterior in order to meet that. So it just, the, the per-unit cost of that was about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And since we're talking about a hundred, a hundred percent affordable project, we're going to be chasing, you know, federal law and housing tax credits and other state housing, affordable housing programs. The state's not going to go for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar a unit construction cost and only net, uh, you know, we're getting netting maybe thirty, thirty-two units. So that's why we've gone up to sixty-three units. We're able to shrink almost builds, you know, twice the amount of units on effectively the same footprint. Program it correctly, have a hyper-efficient building that has all the, all the finishes and efficiencies that we've learned from Lawson Green across the street and replicate theirs. We know Situate, Situate's a great community. Um, you know, Lawson Green, we could have built that thing ten times as large. We, just to give you an idea, we're very aware of the affordable housing crisis in Situate and it's particularly acute among the senior population, which is why we're talking about sixty-two plus here. You know, at Lawson Green right now, we have a waiting list for thirty units of over, with over three hundred names on it. Get them every day and it's, yeah, it's, the demand is great and we recognize that. So what we were thinking about here was how do we maximize the number of units on the property, preserve the existing functions and activities on the property, accommodate the different stakeholders? Because we don't want to, you know, we don't want to anger anyone in the soccer league. We don't want to, you know, we want to maintain the tennis courts. We want to separate the recreation wing off so that there's code reasons for doing that. Because you can't really have housing and, you know, institutional uses, so on and so forth. There's a lot of complexities there. There's also heating and cooling issues associated with that, the old building. Um, and then, you know, it gives the town the opportunity to do, to create, create a new efficient heating HVAC system for the rec, rec building. But basically the idea is that this maximizes the use of the space and does it in a way that's the least disruptive to existing functions and would allow us to come in, move residents there that are co-located with the senior center. I don't even tell anyone in town how great the senior center is, but it's fantastic. I mean, this to me is a really great opportunity. Um, and we really appreciate the opportunity to present this and be happy to provide any other details on it you might want. You know, like I said, we're going to try to go for a high level of affordability. We'll have eight units at thirty percent of A M I, eight at fifty percent of A M I, but the majority of the units will all be below eighty percent of A M I. A hundred percent of this will go under stabilized housing, very subsidized housing inventory. And we'd be looking to basically expand upon the partnership that began at Lawson Green with the Situate Housing Authority and its former chair, Stephen Coulter, when he worked tirelessly to help move that project forward. And I just wanted to say thank you again, Stephen. What was incredible. We were able to develop that. We began that project in twenty sixteen. We opened the doors in February of twenty twenty-one during COVID, two months ahead of schedule and under budget, which is the last time you hear of that. And every year since then, we have, as part of the CPC and Affordable Housing Trust Fund contribution that was made to that project, we return money to the town CPC and Affordable Housing Trust. And I, to correct me, I'll give the checks.
I appreciate that. He told us about.
Oh, yeah. We return surplus cash flow to the town CPC and Affordable Housing Trust. So we'd be looking to create a similar level of support as with Lawson Green for this project. We think we can make it work. The environment, like I said, it's a really great opportunity and then, yep, we have any extra questions by now.
I'll, I'll just start by saying this and then we'll, we'll open it up. So again, we've been talking about this site as a town for a long, long time. We've had a lot of different folks come in and I think stuck a little bit on reuse to tear it down or reuse it. We really want to say that at, at this point, I don't, I have not talked to anyone in my five years on the board, any, any professional that said we can keep this building. So this, this proposal or housing, the housing proposal or just tearing it down are our only options unless as a town, actually we think throwing money at an empty building, vacant building, doing nothing, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on insurance, heating and everything else for nothing to happen are, this is where we are. These are the choices where we are. There's, there's, we're not saving that though, in my opinion, that there's, again, no one there. So that's just the first thing. I just want the folks to know to kind of tee that off. I appreciate you taking a look again. Fifth person to tell us, it's not going to work.
But the spirit, we can keep that spirit.
Yeah, the spirit, right. So, uh, I just want to lay that out for the folks to think that we didn't look hard enough. I've been looking for half a decade, by the way, so. But that, I'll, I'll kick it off.
Can I do one quick other thing?
Sure.
Just part of the pre pictures thing. Let me just, just do this and speak.
Oh, we had an animation of it.
Yeah, I don't know if I've done a screen share correctly. I have not. So, it's considerable. So just kind of. I mean, but you wouldn't do so much.
I, yeah, I probably forgot about it. So.
Anyways, just to give you a kind of perspective on what we're looking at, you know, reorienting the soccer field and kind of planning for parking, obviously there's a lot. Parking's going to be a concern. I think we can work through that. But even just reorienting it the way we have improves the parking, the way it lays out. I think this gives you a pretty good idea. You're coming in, obviously on the right, we've got the senior center. These are, you know, obviously we're preserving all the mature specimen trees that are already on the green there. We didn't want to interfere at all with this. This fabric of this works great. You can Cudworth House there, coming up from the corner here with Farm. That rec parking lot kind of is programmatically separate, remains separate. As we separated the buildings, it really is our front entrance, like Clay said, you know, we're coming in here, the whole building is programmed from here. Nice overview of some parking, but there's the soccer field. And obviously kind of understood the R F P to sort of say, okay, keep the plant, you know, keep the senior center distinct and that's really what we're trying to do here. The vision that our, our folks, our residents would be parked down in the back there. So that's kind of the vision. So.
Well, we can, yeah. Now, the new subject, and again, so this area, it's, it's going to generate a lot of talk because of the stakeholders. I'll just mention that we'll talk about this. I mean, you have Historic, a society which is right there. There's traffic issues, there's parking issues, there's neighbors that live there, the food pantry's there, the senior center's there, recreation, the fields. Yeah, there's a lot going on. So there's a lot of, a lot of things to talk about. We'd, we'd love to start.
Sure. I like the efficient placement and design. I think you guys have done a respectful job with the design intent. I think to get that many units out of a modern, quick building on that type of footprint is admirable. I like the idea that you've got respect in there for extra parking. Because that is going to be a reality that, imagine what's, when there's a game going out there, which you'll have also. So I, I think it's a great use. Again, I'm open to the many times yet before we get to the final, your experience, Grantham Group has got a great reputation. You have an admirable, admirable reputation. I know that already from my days in construction. You know, with the, the other projects you've already successfully done in our town and I, I welcome this. So thank you.
Well, I have to say that I couldn't agree more. Um, I was involved in Lawson Green and usually if something is wrong, we hear about it. Every now and then. Nothing. So, I mean, I think that's amazing. And this is twice as big, I think, more than thirty units at Lawson Green, sixty-three. Um, and I think given the fact that what you're looking for from the town is a reasonable contribution, um, would we be operating under the same financial scenario inasmuch as you manage the building, own it? We would be, um, leasing the land, Jim? Is that the, I haven't read the contract.
We haven't even got that filed.
Okay.
Why don't you do that? What we're envisioning is basically a ground lease just for the, the footprint. Because I think the tax, it's in the town's interest to control long-term parking. We'd have cross easements, we'd have certain easements on certain areas to park. Obviously, we're, we're talking about a senior population. We want to have designated parking spaces for them that are close to the front door. And that would basically be the extent of it. And then we would, you know, everything could be covered with easements, but we'd have a long-term ground lease similar to that, which we have with the Situate Housing Authority or Lawson Green. That one's ninety years long. We do a similar thing here, but we can really just carve out the actual building footprint so that there isn't issues of like, who, whose flower bed, whose flower beds are these? Or, you know, like basically the town retains control.
I would never argue more.
You know, whose responsibility is it to, to, you know, shovel this part of the sidewalk, you know, that, that kind of thing. We can hash all that out in the details. But really I think it is important that the town retain control over, given all the stakeholders over the site. And, you know, we also will come up with a traffic plan that looks at the idea of making this probably one way, through the property, out of Cudworth, First Parish or something like that, or some configuration like that. It takes into account all the different uses.
But I, I think the, uh, Lawson Green model has worked well in the fact that we don't, we, we're not in charge of the tenants. You are. So any problems they have, they take, they come to you, not to the town. Um, and as far as I'm concerned, are you responsible for the exterior of the building?
Yes, yes.
Because one of the things that has happened to us in the past was we had to pay a lot of money to put in new windows at Sunbury Park Housing. And we had to pay a lot of money to fix the pool out when it was failing and going to cause leaky problems, which if you're a homeowner, you know, you don't want to hear. That's the last thing you want to hear is leaking. Um, so to me, the fact that you have responsibility for the building and that, in my opinion, it fits on the site quite nicely and takes into account all the other uses, which if I'm the potential tenant for that, air, that, an apartment there, what a great thing to have all that going on around you. And you're not out in some field somewhere where you have to, you know, take a, I'm sorry to throw shuttle buses under, under the bus, but you don't have to have a shuttle bus. You can walk across to Lawson Palm and you can walk across to Lawson Green.
Library.
You can walk to the library. There are walking trails there now that should be, in my opinion, expanded. Um, you know, muck out the window and I, I'm also sensitive to the fact that you're still leaving the tennis courts there and the pickleball courts that I was concerned who were to put housing there, how would we, uh, protect the tenants from what has turned out to be a bit of a problem with pickleball? So I think it answers a lot of, a lot of questions. And I will throw it out there that as many times as we talk about town hall being there, we cannot afford it. And that's my opinion and I've been listening to this primary diversity for a long time now. And the idea of a town hall, it, as it's, looks like a town hall for now, it's, we can't afford it. We just can't afford it. And we, we've looked at that many times. So this seems to me to address in terms of what we as a community are concerned about is the affordable housing. CPC has done well, but we could do better. And, um, we've already taken care of a lot of our historic properties and a lot of our recreational facilities. We spent a lot of CPC money on all those things. And so for now, for us to be able to take on a significant, uh, affordable housing project for a population that needs it is, I can't think of a better way to do this. And, you know, we will have to mitigate through neighbors and, you know, make sure that as many people as possible are happy. Not everyone will be happy, but do the best we can. So I, the Grantham Group was great to work with on Lawson Green. So I think I was very happy to see that you actually submitted a proposal.
Yeah. Susan and Karen, are you, uh?
Yeah. Susan, want to go first?
No, you can go. As I, it's kind of my problem. You can go.
Can we stop screen sharing? Cause you guys are about. Okay, I can almost see you guys. Thank you. Um, I'm sorry I'm not in the room. I, I had two sets of questions. One was for the presentation and about your calculations on the math that makes it work for your, your groups is, um, we'll have to, you know, separate the HVAC systems from the A wing from your new building. You're talking about the new field and you're talking about expanded parking. How much of those costs are you anticipating in your calculations?
So we're, we're not looking at, we don't, you know, we're not touching the rec wing or the gym heating system. That's not in our budget. But we did consider within our budget, some of the parking and configuration issues there. The field, I think, I don't know how it is constituted currently. Is it, is it asked for, for? Um, the field, I think, I don't know how it is constituted currently. Is it, is it asked for, or is it just grass? Does it have a sophisticated, like, sprinkler system?
Absolutely, it's not sophisticated.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, we, that's not currently in our budget, but that, that doesn't tend to be a very cheap, that's not going to be a big, big number, I don't think. Could be, I mean, you can do it cheap. There's differences between, and then these are things we'll have to hash out, which items make sense for the developer to take on, and with some town contribution versus, maybe the town will do it. There might be some there might be higher costs, there's certain efficiencies that might come into play. But again, like we were saying, we were thinking that we would only ground lease the actual building footprint. And then we'll figure out some of the elements around the traffic design and traffic flow. That's kind of the contribution exaction into the project itself, but, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing I think that to touch on here is because this was just a conceptual plan, we really haven't had a site, still have a look at it. There may be a solution where we don't have to relocate, relocate the field, you know, it was just sort of, we looked at, I looked at it, and it just seemed like you get the most parking by keeping the geometry very orthogonal, and that's what led me to this, but it was not, there was, there were some other ideas there. So I think when we get more meticulous about it, we may find that we have enough parking by leaving the field by itself, so. Not looking to run the, run the budget up.
No, I'm fine.
Uh, few more questions. So in the current conceptual plan, how many parking spaces are behind there?
So there's about a hundred and twenty spots that we've created on that, on that plan. Now, that, that could be augmented, because we've kind of got an oblong, or a big, the oblong end to the soccer field, which I think kind of looks to like mimic the walking track, so there's sort of a circular bottom to it. That might, you know, that could potentially come into play. That could be slid down, maybe you could have more sort of north towards the, towards the existing structure, more parking there. But yeah, we, we recognize parking is going to be a challenge, but we want, what we're trying to do is isolate the parking, and this conceptual drawing kind of gets you thinking, thinking about that as resident parking, and then obviously, facility, recreational parking, other use.
No, I, I, I agree with my colleagues that this, um, you, you know, you've really, you've really done well with the site layout and all of that. The only little tweak that, that, you know, should we go forward with this, that, um, we've learned with other public buildings, is because it's a campus, because this is a supportive, um, use on the site, is that we need to think about access between the new building, this building, and the senior center. Um, the way it's configured right now is you got to walk out, your entrance, and all the way back and around, and that seems like, like, something that needs to be addressed, that there's a much easier connection, even a walkway or something, because those are the residents that are going to benefit from that facility, so, um, that's a tweak. For, for the board, I have, I just want to flag that, um, and I think something, you know, you've already discussed some of the traffic issues. Um, I look at, I think the chair has made it abundantly clear, I am a hundred percent on it, of we can't afford to reuse this building for any use, so we need a partner. And this is a very strong, um, uh, proposal for that site. Um, the, in my mind, the only other alternative is to tear the thing down and not have anything there, which is going to cost the town a lot of money. Um, and that's, you know, we may end up there, but it seems a complete waste, but, um, we do have an opportunity in this conversation to start really working with our friends over in the planning board on Hudworth transfer, uh, uh, you know, um, whether it's one-way or not, whether or not we close First Parish. How do we safely convey people from this campus to Lawson Common to Central Park and the library? So there's a real opportunity to really address some sort of long-term problems, um, with the site, and I think it's a great opportunity, so. Um, I'm excited by this. I think it's very thoughtful. You know, there's still a whole ton of work to do, and I'm curious to see what our next steps would be. Um, and then the other thing for our board to think about is, you know, any costs associated with the A-wing redevelopment, which would need to be considered at the same time, we need to factor in to this whole proposal. You know, obviously, not your side, but for the town, um, for us not to address them at the same time makes no sense to me.
Yeah, so I agree with, um, what all my colleagues have said. Um, definitely on the reuse, I too have walked through the building and tried to think of a way to reuse it and ask anyone I could on how, um, if it's possible to reuse. It's possible to do everything, it's just like astronomically expensive to do it. Um, so I do think the best use, the best option is to tear the building down. And I think even a better option is, um, displaying a very similar, um, as you have in your plan. And I think your plan is, um, is really good. Um, I have a question on the traffic, if you can speak more on the traffic study, because I know Karen touched on it a little bit, but like, it's a lot, like, you kind of like, like, the traffic study is related to the senior center, it's related to rec, it's related to this new building, the fields over here, the fields across the street, and the like horrible intersection. Um, that anyone who ever drops their kid off at the rec department has to navigate through. So, um, I would think any sort of traffic study really ought to kind of expand it. Um, and as well, as Karen mentioned, across the street. So how would people walk across that street where that intersection is? So is that, like, is your traffic study kind of just for the, the building itself, or would it expand?
We didn't have done a traffic study, but I mean, you know, I was driving that specific intersection, was looking at it earlier, about this is a place for a roundabout. That would be sort of like, that seemed to be like, one of the.
Yeah, I mean, that, that wasn't actually a plan for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And anyways, that's what was nice. What does he, he mentioned, I'm like, that's not, you're just.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And then someone said, you're kind of coming over a little bit.
Right. So we haven't done a traffic study, but I can sort of speak to our residents over at Lawson Green. So one of the things is, you know, not everybody there has a car. You know, we're talking about elderly, uh, seniors that are of modest needs, and, you know, one of the first things, one of the residents told me, it was like, oh, it's so great, get rid of my car, because it's on the Sitchwood Loop. And they're already at the senior center, so the loop comes, it goes down to the market and the Harvard. And the rest of it, they're, they're at the library, they're at the walk, the senior center, they're doing the meal program at the senior center, it's, it's all there. So you're not seeing a lot of excess trips associated with this resident population. Now, co-locate, uh, residents with the senior center, I mean, I think the trips are beginning to decline for, uh, we've, obviously, we encourage people to not have cars if they could, um, just because of the cost associated with maintaining that later on, a fixed income. But we haven't done any, so to answer your question, we haven't done any traffic studies, but we seem to think that there would be probably a good way to lay out this site that sort of takes into account the different uses at different times. And that's why we kept the project away from the existing parking lot by the Veterans Gymnasium, because that's sort of like, that's recreation exclusively. We would never want to have the building programmed, that's why we programmed the building to back, because that's really where the visitors will be coming in, and the residents will be coming into the building.
Yeah, no, I, I do think it's good to keep that separate. And that even, I mean, the picture that you had up, um, right before, with the, if you can.
Yeah.
I was gonna also say something about that picture. There's, what I noticed looking through this is that the rec center parking could be way more efficient. Like, we could, I see like three parking lots. Oh, sorry, not that one.
Aerial view two.
Aerial view two. I see like three parking lots, right? You have one over here, one up there, and one over here, that's the rec one. Efficient, efficient, yeah, not very, one, one way out, one way in, small, tight. I like try, also, that's another drop-off spot, right? Because the rec center, there's an entrance on the other side right there. Um, so I do think, like, as a town, the rec, the rec side, there's things we could do to, to possibly make things more efficient for like a drop-off. Because, because these two parking lots have kind of the efficient in-out, right? And that's like, doesn't, isn't as efficient. So I do think it would bring other opportunities, once we have the rec center together, to kind of possibly expand our parking as well. Um, so I did notice that. And then I was, um, I'm curious on the units. Were you, you, they're all one-bedroom? Did you consider more than one-bedroom?
So we went with one-bedrooms, we're targeting six, age restricted sixty-two plus. The state really won't fund, uh, two-bedrooms for this population, because it's kind of a near-do-well son kind of scenario we're going to end up with, like, you know, cousin Larry's, it's a little mom, fifty-six, and that kind of situation. So they don't really allow, it's really one-bedrooms are going to make your application fundable. It's, you know, we're, our average unit size is about six hundred and ninety square feet. It's hyper-efficient, it's, it's, it's a corporate, or it's an individual.
So is it senior, is it disabled plus senior, or just?
Yes, senior, disabled, and veteran.
Okay, so it is senior, disabled, and veteran. And, um, yeah, I just, I thought it was, I may have more questions later, but that, this one's thorough.
Yeah, so. We're getting there, so I just quickly, um, yeah, I'll, I'll just tell where I am. I mean, this, this whole role, it makes me nervous, because we haven't done what we're going to do, which is hear from the public, because I I don't know exactly what rec's going to think, what their plan is. I don't know if the senior center's going to be upset, is that, is there, there's not enough parking down, should there be enough? Uh, there's so many unanswered to this, that. I mean, but I am of mind, we're tearing this down, and either it's going to be grass or some bocce courts, or it's going to be something similar to this. Um, that's just where we are. But that's why I really want to hear from the public, because we don't hear well enough, and we need to. So with that, I'm going to open it up. Questions?
Answer by Kevin Chris Road. First question. Lawson Green came in under Haha. Friendly forty-b. This is coming in as friendly forty-b?
Yes, I would presume that we approach it that way. Because that gives the town a maximum amount of input into the remedy process, through the ZBA. And then also, there's the planning board weighs in with recommendation, that's in town, which will weigh in with recommendations. So a friendly forty-b is the best route for accommodating all concerns of the town.
Because the planning board would be really concerned about parking, about traffic, and what have you. Um, we talked about Hudworth, whether it should be one-way or not. There's been discussions about rotary. Um, I think one of the big negatives would be, well, one, but in any rate, people law, with residents, it is incredibly noisy. And, you know, as someone was saying earlier this evening, you're almost better off to put a football in some big huge warehouse or empty building, that, that you're not going to disturb any neighbors. And the other question finally is food pantry, where's that going? Is it gone?
The food pantry's been looking for their own place for years, they haven't found one. Uh, and this, yeah, they'd be out of there. Are there other potential places in the B-wing or the A-wing or the gym that we might be able to now eat at? Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
We would have those conversations with them.
All right, I mean, there were a lot of conversations that need to be had, and.
Yeah, this, this is right at the very start, right?
Very start. And one of the things that I have seen all the time is the more people that you involve, and you have these almost coffees, invite people to these coffees, give them some tarts. And tarts, you're not going to please everybody. There are always going to be people that are being tipped off, and they will be forever. We are, you all need to do what is for the best interest of the entire town. But I would suggest little public hearings all over town, not just here. And it's really, really unfortunate that people do not have a local table. You know, I mean, I think that in itself is tragic. But that said, the more stakeholders, if you will, that you can involve, whether you have it down at the KFC, whether you have it wherever, whether you have it down the harbor somewhere, bring as many people as you can together. And I'm sure that some of us in the planning board would be really happy to work with that.
Welcome. That's, we, talking about, as we said earlier, this is just, this is, we definitely need more, uh, definitely need more meetings to talk about. And as you said, where the food pantry is, and then there were another side with pushing, is there something? There, it's a, it's a huge, large ball of things, right?
Moving parts in all of this. So, and I like traffic, so. That said.
Can you, can you not share, because there's going to be people online that are going to want to raise their hand.
Gentlemen in the back, yeah?
Uh, Nico, one second ago, he's, uh, P Chief, that's his highway. Um, couple of basic numbers that I'm figuring out all the detail to, but I'm, I'm curious. You mentioned a figure of about seven hundred and fifty thousand in smaller number of units. Oh, here, it doesn't make a lot of sense. What would a sixty-two or three-unit proposal bring that number into the ballpark of, have that?
It's about, yeah, we're trying to get, we're trying to keep it in. So we're at three, three point, uh, thirty-two million dollars right now in our estimate. That's based on numbers right now, which are subject to a lot of change and uncertainty. Um, our per-unit cost, we're really trying to get to, i- is about four hundred and ten thousand per unit. Um, all in, that's really where we are. When we built Lawson Green, that was the most, uh, that was the cheapest per-unit cost for a project in the state's affordable housing portfolio developed in years. By like a factor, like, we, we were like ninety thousand dollars less than the next, uh, project.
So, so the second question that might be more quickly for the board, and again, I don't know if we know the numbers right now, but if, if this ends up in the sixty-plus, uh, unit category, when we talk about affordable housing, not just the crisis in Citro and Massachusetts, but as we talk about affordable housing as a change to, uh, call them unfriendly fortyBs or other types of fortyB developments, and the ratio would be, that have control over that property as a town. Do we have any idea how close sixty-two more units would get us as a sixty-five-hundred, you know, unit town in the ballpark?
In terms of the ten percent?
Yes.
So the, yeah, the, the bottom of funds proposal that was up on three A, that was two hundred and sixty units, that would have put us just over the ten percent. So sixty units doesn't get us very far in terms of getting to ten percent, but it would give us two or three years of safe harbor, because we've created those units at a certain time period. What we need, with the new census, we're finding close to three hundred units to get to ten percent, and those would be rental units, because all rental units count.
And if the state doesn't get changed, uh, wills us?
But it's, it's, like I said, the new stretch build is driving up the cost of building by twenty, thirty percent. So we have an affordable housing crisis, you know, it'll make it more and more expensive to build the housing that we get to gather.
And some of the, I don't know if everyone's seen the open proposal, that the town exposure is. Oh, yeah.
Finally, it's also posted online.
Yeah.
All of the information is posted.
So, so if I may, the town would be getting affordable houses for seniors?
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity. But we made a point of talking about that word a lot, because I wanted to make sure we're back on Lawson Green, that when you said in perpetuity, it didn't have a different definition than my definition. Uh, so we would be, I think I did the math, just on a piece of paper, seventy-nine thousand dollars per unit. Sort of the town's investment for affordable housing forever. Um, you know, we've spent a lot of money on a lot of other things, and this to me is a significantly good investment for town, and we do have funding sources for it, so that's the way I look at it. What does the town invest?
No one else is, but yes, never that.
Uh, Susan, agree, three, three, seven, for the territory. Um, I just kind of had a bunch of items I, you know, took note of, looking at the plan, I, I hope it's okay, I'm just trying to run down them, the thoughts that came up. Um, Dick Terry even mentioned about the traffic, um, because of that interception. There's a lot of problems with that area. There's restrictions with the site already, the first parish, um, so those are things to consider. There's a lot of problems with that area, there's restrictions with the site already, the first parish, um, so those are things to consider. Um, the lighting, we have, uh, lights being turned off at nine P M for our butters, so that's another factor. But something coming in that, you know, might have lighting to be for, you know, on all night. Um, but the additional, you know, traffic noise potential. Um, there's a lot of lack of sort of pedestrian, uh, cross routes over the site. Um, it's removing a lot of use that currently exists and it's not adding, um, you know, walkways and things like that that would probably be needed, especially if you're, say you move the field and you're putting in parking and you've got kids from rec crossing over, there's no safety. Yet there, you know, little things like that, um, where are the dumpsters going? I don't see room for the current dumpsters for the senior center, where are all those dumpsters gonna be placed? Um, then with field, you're gonna lose the baseball football field if you move it. And if so, um, it's pretty tight up against that end of, um, the property. So where will the nets be stored? It's already a situation with what we have, um, so we've got those kind of things that need to be dealt with. Um, there's no place to put those because it is a lacrosse and a soccer field. Um, we've already noted the food pantry. Recreation, I agree with, um, there's a need, honestly, I think there's a need with standard parking, um, in the area of the Frederick House. I think, um, that should come up a little bit more, there's still light there from the circle that was there before. Um, they have, uh, a lot of people getting outside the building and it needs the extra space. Um, the whole area around recreation, we have told, it's a complete nightmare. Um, people park wherever they want, they park on the grass, they park all their cover growth and the purple fields and central fields are nice, it's, it's just everywhere, but they're parking. Um, they park on sidewalks, they park right immediately, there's no parking. Um, and they don't wanna walk, they don't wanna walk. Uh, let's see, and then really the other, the other issue with mostly the field is that if you do move it, um, there's the issue too where it would be out of commission essentially for a year. And that's one of the best fields in town for grass, um, and we have a lot of fields, so that's another situation to take into account. We've got the school project going to affect, and I think that might be done, um, for rather pushing builds and that might be back, um, because they're able to use, but I know they're already gonna have issues the last time. So, you know, just, um, you know, thinking about a lot of stuff because we have fencing put in, you know, for senior center, we have butters out behind us, we're all five feet or more lower than property. So the lights do cross, maybe put fencing in to stop it from going to people's homes. Um, there's just the old chain link ones there right now, moves out, it's resting. Um, yeah, so just like a lot of stuff like that and, um, you know, as in a butter, I would really like to have a stay in it because I feel like we had to fight our way to be heard for the senior center. And it would be nice to be part of, you know, the process and have a lot of input because I know this property lived back, I've done it for almost six years, so. Um, I walk it every day, I know it very well, so I would like to have that opportunity.
Uh, Richard Perry, here with my first question. I think, you know, I, I come from a background that I went to school for architecture. I worked in the construction industry for the last twenty-three years. And, you know, I, I, I hear these sales pitches all the time and I understand the process. Excuse me, and, uh, I respect the process. But at the same time, when I hear that, oh, we can't, we can't afford to restore, we can't afford to restore. I have to say, my integrity, the, uh, basement of school is a piece of history in Situate and should be respected. Uh, shouldn't just be torn down and disrecovered. Uh, I understand the need for housing, but I think this way to see it can work around that. The gate school is continuously attacked for every proposed that here in this town, let's put it there, let's put it there, let's put it there. And I just feel like more thought needs to be put into this site. Stop, take a breath, really think about it. And again, I, I respect the process, their design is very nice, I'm not gonna say it's ugly. But again, you're losing Situate, you're, you're missing Situate's history. And it's sad, you look around this town and it's always like, oh, it's okay, just carry down, put something up that looks like it. You hear it over and over and over again. It can be done, the money can be found, if we can find money for projects all over this town, we can find the money for this too. And that's, and, you know, like Suzanne was saying, there's a lot of, you know, the, the, the traffic issue is huge. You know, I literally had to get, I would go up the street the other day to allow my wife to back out of the driveway on First Parish Road in the morning because the traffic was so effed up. Nobody would let her pull out of the driveway. I mean, this is a reality that we live in. And it's a beautiful area and it's, if it keeps getting more and more congested, it's, it changes and changes and it changes still worse. The people that don't live in our area, okay, fine, yeah, that looks great on paper, yeah, this is beautiful. But you don't live where we live and it's a different situation when you live there and you see it from the beginning. We look out the window now and we see the rooftop of the senior center, which is fine, it's not a terribly, it's not an ugly building. But at the same time, our vantage point is looking at the rooftop even at the top of the roof. And yes, we grew up, you know, I've lived there for forty-two years out of my fifty-two years. And, you know, it's, it's always been looking at a school, looking at a school, which is fine, you know, and, you know, we always knew that we lived next to a public place that was gonna be hustled and bustled to some degree. But at the same time, that school is kind of like a, uh, like I said, it's historic. I went to school there, it's a beautiful building. Regardless of its problems, it should be restored, it should be saved, at least the facade, something should be saved on that building. And you do have to give more respect to the fact of the, the split fields, parking, the, the, like Suzanne was saying, there is, when there's games and things going on there, there's a bill park, it is crazy. We used to walk our dog and you could barely get around all the cars everywhere, though getting run over. So like I said, there's, there's a lot to be considered for this site. And I just feel like, you know, if you're gonna build another building for housing, put it across the street in line with the Lawson Green in the woods where it belongs. That whole area is empty and you could put all your housing, one, two, three in a line, all next to each other and avoid all the headaches of this particular site. I don't see the point in trying to stub it into this little site with all the other things going on. That's my say.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Mr. Goodrich, you do have the virtual hands right.
All right, remember, what, when we're gonna do that? Yeah, yes.
No, I just wanna say I do, I do agree with, um, a lot of what he said as well, I just kinda left that off. But, um, I do agree with wanting to keep the history and that's a very important thing, so.
Sure. Uh, I think it's Dan.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Willett, Willett, you should be able to unmute, just go ahead with your name and address and with your statement, thank you so much.
Uh, first name Dan Willett, I'm sorry, first name Dan, last name Willett, I'm with Situate Housing Authority. Uh, we operate, uh, Central Park next to Lawson Green, very nice operation there. Uh, the presentation, quite frankly, was very nice, very impressed with, uh, the extent. Uh, and I do understand the impact on the roads and the traffic for the locals, that's, that's very clear. Uh, but the town Situate is growing and we do have a large number of need for housing. Uh, so my suggestion and my support here is for housing of any type. Uh, if we have elderly housing in the single bedroom, that'd be great. Uh, if we have some family housing elsewhere, as in, as was just suggested in the, uh, woods next door across the street, all of that would be great, it would all be great, and addressing the traffic by widening the roads definitely makes a lot of sense. Again, I'm here to voice support for housing of any kind. Uh, but I do wanna stress, this town does need handicap ADA housing units. Again, I think the proposal is really good, I would like to see it more in depth. I'll be calling the developers tomorrow to want to hear from me. And, uh, I'll be bringing this to the board, the Housing Authority Board at our next meeting, just for conversation. Thank you so much for holding us here.
Thank you. It's a good honor, that gentleman here.
My name is Jim Duff, I live on Country Way and I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm a, I'm working like, uh, for the housing finances, I'm on my own. I'm just interested in sort of the environment for funding for a project of this size from the state through low income housing tax credits. Given our current national politics, you know, it isn't reasonable to expect low income housing tax credits, they come from the feds to the state and the state disperses them. Uh, the other question that I've heard raised around in this particular, uh, over sixty-two age project, another one in town, is it reasonable to expect they would, they being the state, would consider another age restricted project in Situate, um, with that population? And we think thirty-three, you know, the project. And I'm just wondering, like, it's, my understanding is these things take, like, about four years, like your last one took. Is that, um, kind of the timeframe we're talking about to, to, to put together funds?
Absolutely, that is, you know, we all know the chaos in Washington right now is absolutely terrible in the business generally. It's particularly bad for affordable housing businesses, uh, or anybody that relies on any kind of federal funding. The tax, the federal loan and housing tax credit isn't subject to annual appropriation to Congress, it's statutory. It is provided by the IRS effectively on a per capita basis by population nationally. So it actually doesn't involve, doesn't involve, doesn't get funded, it's available. We are impacted by things like, hey, if you wanna cut the corporate tax rate down to like three percent, then no one needs to, you know, like, uh, needs federal tax cuts. That said, you know, the demand is still strong, pricing is still good for the moment. Uh, and shoot, this is, this is gonna take probably five years to get off the ground. Like I said, you know, we started working with Stephen Culver, the board of the S A, uh, City Housing Authority in twenty sixteen. We opened the doors in twenty twenty-one. So that gives you an idea of the gestation cycle of all these projects. And that's just because if for every dollar of tax credits out there, affordable housing trust fund of the state, there's about thirty dollars of the projects chasing that. And so the more funding that you can put, the more compelling case you can make to the state to show like, hey, look, we've got a ton of local support here, the town's putting in a lot of money to support this project. That helps marketing, you know, our, our, getting it over the, over the finish line. But it does take a little while, and, you know, this project's gonna be very complex, there's a lot of moving parts here. There's elements involved, the towns, the recway, you know, just, there's gotta be planning, so it is gonna take a while. You know, in an ideal world, you would be like a one-year project to get, you know, but it takes planning, at least, at least a year of planning, then applications, and then obviously a year, twelve months for one instruction, yeah? So, and we have, you know, it was with Lawson Green, you were in front of the CPC, you were in front of the Affordable Housing Trust. We were doing those info sessions together throughout the whole process and then, you know, we had to go before TAV meeting, um, to get the actual CPC funding for that project. So, it was process.
You know, no one, no one is putting a shovel on the ground tomorrow. Um, these things do take years and they take multiple, 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 multiple meetings. You've tried to address the things that Will Green brought up, uh, Mr. Perry brought up. We're at the very beginning of this process, but we're actually sort of in the middle. Because the, the proposal was, and ten years ago, if I'm recalling correctly, to tear down the gate school and put the senior center there. And there was a feeling in town, not everyone agrees with me, that if we had told the voters we were gonna tear the building down, they would have voted the senior center down for the third, fourth, or fifth time. So that we're, we've been sitting on that building, how long has, it seems like yesterday that, uh, the middle school opened, but we've been sitting on this building for a very long time. And it's not for want of trying, it's not for want of imagination, and it's not for want of, you know, uh, willingness. And it's not that we wanna plan everything in one part of town. Um, but when you go looking for vacant land, for example, in this town, it is really, really, really hard to come by. Um, and we're lucky we didn't wind up with two hundred units of Bartlett Woods. Uh, but, you know, I mean, the reality is that we have a finite amount, we're bounded by the ocean. Um, we have a finite amount of land and, uh, so I, I appreciate everything that everyone has to say about this. Nobody wants something built in their backyard, um, but, you know, the reality is these things have to, some things have to reform. And I, I think it was Karen Manfield said, well, you know, we tear the building down, leave it, it ain't a grass lawn. Well, that's not a very good solution, right? But what other solution do we have? And again, you know, I understand that people think you can just go in and fix the building. I, I don't know how many more expert opinions we have to hear to realize that is not true. So, um, again, I think everyone will have many opportunities to weigh in on this and this is just the beginning of, you know, where we'll wind up in a few years, so.
Sure, I think everybody's input tonight has been very important in lighting. Ms. Green, I did get your letter, we were gonna share that in our correspondence tonight. I'm glad you were able to touch on it and elucidate us with the, the local understanding, the immediate footprint. But please have faith, if we all learn the word compromise, if we all can work together and we're at the beginning, we're really not at the beginning, we've had a vacant building for too many years and we have questions, things like the ballparks, the food pantry, all that has already been, we've all been talking about it. So now if we can formalize ourselves in a common project that had potential, all of those aspects can come into play and we can end up with a successful project. That's really what we want, we want your considerations, we wanna make this, this universally adaptable to everybody. So that's, that's my bar.
And we, and last thing I'll say is just that I wanna, I invite those voices who disagree with this plan. We need to hear those voices to make sure everyone is heard, to make sure that we, every possibility, whatever we're doing here, we shake it out and we see what we can do. So that, this is a really good kind of starting conversation. Keep going, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, uh, we're a second here. Yeah, uh, Nancy, come on up, we're gonna talk a faith and a prayer, everyone's charged us for soon. Bill, let me call my team policy. Bill of policy.
Lacking grace. Yeah, try that again.
You, that is, you never lack grace.
So annually, the board views the outstanding ambulances receivable. According to the, uh, the billing and, excuse me, collection policy. That was adopted in two thousand fourteen by the board and amended in two thousand nineteen. Anything over twenty-four months is to be considered to be written off. The board had been keeping five years, sixty months open. Last year, we cut that down to forty-eight months. So before you, you have ones outstanding for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three. If you wish to remain at forty-eight months, it'd be to write off fiscal twenty-one. If you was to drop it down to thirty-six months, you'd have to write off fiscal twenty-one or fiscal twenty-two. So you have two motions depending on where you want to go. I think keeping it at forty-eight months is fine. I can say that plenty of time for opportunities for things to be paid. In the interim, the policy allows for Jim, Fire Jake, and I to update hardship requests or other instances that arise on an integral basis.
Just for clarification, what's typically the reason why somebody is, is it someone's insurance that usually doesn't enter? I mean, I know, and again, just so folks know, fire department will never deny or refuse, will obviously always transport any, any person. But just like the actual daily jujitsu, how does that?
Yeah, the smaller dollar amounts are usually ones that this is left over after, this is like a patient's pocket. Do you see some fifty dollars, hundred twenty dollars in the patient, whether through hardship or other reason, have not paid. Sometimes the patient isn't well enough or decides not to make hardship request. The larger ones, it can be import address, that the address was perceived, or it could be that the person was Medicare or Medicaid eligible, but the window to apply to make that claim passed.
Why?
It sometimes is, the person isn't capable of.
Oh, they need to make a claim like a year?
Well, no, they need to, normally the fire department will, when they make the transport, gather everyone's information. But there are times when people are not able to provide that information. And then they try to get it from the hospital, but it's, that's not always happen. And then there are just those who just don't get it though. Either they're not sure, their insurance doesn't cover it, and it does not give it.
Could I add one more thing to that from my own personal experience?
Yeah.
There's also another factor where your insurance company messes with you and doesn't allow. And you've got to fight with them for two or three months before they pick up their share. And if you pay your share before the insurance company does, it's over with. So sometime you're holding your side, fighting with the insurance company to get their side paid, then you pay. And so I think forty-eight months is the way to go. You can, you've got to give people time.
And there, there are some insurance companies that nail the check to the patient. For the, for the, for the portion of the ambulance ride or just for the whole ambulance ride. No, and, no, keeping in mind that if, if you've been transported by ambulance, something very negative is going on. You're like, they're, they may have been a motor vehicle accident, maybe that you're ill, and you get a check in the mail.
And it's made out to the patient.
Yeah, they would have to bring it to town hall and sign it over. So I can tell you on one hand how many times someone's brought a check into town hall in all my years and signed it over. Because they're getting a check when they need it the most. And you really can't fault people on that. I don't like it, but of course I understand it. You understand it.
What, so what did we pay? This is, so fiscal year twenty twenty-one is like ninety thousand dollars.
Yes.
What did we pay in twenty twenty?
In twenty twenty, I think it was, you did two years last year, and it was about a hundred thirty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Which is two years. Okay.
And keep in mind.
My theory is it's going up because people know they pay bills.
True. You collect about around fifty percent of what you bill. Because keep in mind, we have two nursing homes. So if there's Medicare or Medicaid involved, we can charge whatever we want. We're only going to get what Medicare had paid us. So right there, you're probably talking, I mean, it was what you're probably talking about seventy-five percent, which is nearly going to be recoverable. Um, but keep in mind that dates, we're still in the COVID period. So yes, people were in charge for ambulance rides, but you had to have a diagnosis of COVID at the time. A lot of times, those diagnoses came later.
All right, I'm good. And this is what it is. I just want, don't want people to be like, oh, they're going to just pay for it. We don't have a lot of money.
But they get harassed when you.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if you're willing to put up with the harassment, what are you going to, do they call people on the phone?
They don't call them.
They don't. They just harass you. That's, that's enough too.
And, and they, some of them go over to the deputy. Deputy Kolder, they, they, okay, one, one, yeah, it's about, they collect, they collect something.
All right.
Do we have any policy, in case there's ever someone unemployed or anything, or people?
Those like people that serve a mortgage.
Is there any kind of policy or?
Yeah.
You mean as in like garnishment?
Yeah, I should, I don't know. I'm just saying, any of our financial policies we talked about or?
We don't, uh, the one time that I mentioned to a town council about garnishing someone's wages for something like this, they told me not to do it.
There's no, no.
And oftentimes, if you see an employee on here, it might have been a worker's comp.
Right.
That it didn't, the, the building didn't get rid of. So those like that, when you see a, you're under the worker's comp, you can try to ferret them out.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I, I'm just, I didn't know.
Right, the worker's comp, which is paying ourselves anyways.
Yeah.
So we sell, she'll, she'll just go out on fire.
I don't think so. She doesn't look like she does. I can read her eyes. Move it along, discussion. Move it along, friends.
You can make a motion. Move to approve the recommended abatements for all outstanding ambulance charges from fiscal year twenty twenty-one, totaling eighty-nine thousand, ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Moved by Mr. Gilmore, second.
Second.
Ms. Cantile from afar. Roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yep, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Ponley. Yes, Ms. Cantile.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna Solomon, favor. Agent Perkins.
All right, onto new business, town situation sidewalk grant for renewal. Salt Society.
Yeah, the board granted Salt Society permission to have outdoor seating. We gave them an agreement to use the sidewalk. It's only a three-year agreement. Otherwise, we need to go to town meeting, so that agreement is expiring. So we wish for a lot of them to continue the outside seating and do the sidewalk agreement. Really no issues with the outside seating. Salt Society have an effort. No complaints occasionally. We have to try to make sure there's handicap space down there for the most part, which is pretty seamless for that.
Yeah, I remember that was the big, the handicap, so they fixed that last year. Karen, are you going to say something? No, you're good.
Do we, do we have any agreements, Jim, with any other restaurants downtown?
Sidewalks, no, that's the only one that has it on the sidewalk. Uh, you will be seeing, I think, Hi Bernie might be coming in. So that'll go to the building department first to make sure there's enough space. For handicap accessibility, and that'll, it'll be up to you whether you want to do that or not.
It's nice to have an outside.
As long as it fits.
Yes.
If you're really quick, you can get a shrimps on when you walk out.
Nobody notices.
All right.
Please, they don't take a motion.
Move to approve the renewal of the sidewalk license agreement for Salt Society. One forty-six Front Street, such a mask for term of three years. And to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement.
Second, moved by Sarah Silverman, Mr. Gilmore, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Cantile.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna Solomon, favor.
All right, seasonal alcohol license renewal and entertainment licenses.
Wait, you skipped to the angle.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mary Ford, I'm sorry. Annual renewals and appointment, yes.
I can do it. Move to reappoint Mary Ford to the Board of Registers. For a term of three years or until a successor is named. And completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second, by Sarah Silverman, Mr. Gilmore, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Cantile.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna Solomon, favor.
Well, now we're getting on to see the alcohol licenses. I think, if I join, I remember, I have to recuse myself from the S V A.
You do.
Do I have a history?
Then you can, and you can.
I will have to recuse. I will.
You still have three people to vote.
Wait, what do you have to refuse?
I remember that too.
Okay.
We do seven eleven and then we recuse.
And that is, yes, right, because there are three different ones.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
See, they're the nicest people.
I, I know. I frequent there a lot. Chris is a good.
All right, so let's do this.
So the first one here means the one on the bottom.
Yeah, move to renew the twenty twenty-five seasonal off-premise section fifteen, all alcohol beverage license for. Is it Jack?
Jack, Jackman.
Jackman Incorporated Doing Businesses seven eleven from April first, twenty twenty-five through January fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. With approved hours of Monday through Saturday, eight AM to eleven PM, and Sunday, ten AM to eleven PM.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Is it off-premise alcohol or all-premise? I don't.
It's a liquor store. It's liquor stores.
Seven eleven's off-premise. Seven eleven's a pack.
You buy it today, yeah.
It's a packy. You leave.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I was just confused by that. Okay, thank you.
Roll, uh, move, Ms. Harrison, second one, Ms. Ponley. Roll, uh, yeah, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Ponley.
Yes.
Ms. Cantile.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna Solomon, favor.
All right, Madam Chair.
You guys need to leave.
Good to know.
I think so. You're supposed to, right?
Yeah, we will.
Susan, get the gavel.
Quick, lock the door.
The coup is complete. Excellent.
It's all women now. We've done it. All right, we've done it.
Right, well, thanks.
All right, move to renew the twenty, or do we have to discuss this all?
Yeah.
I think Citroa Beach Association, there were complaints way back, but.
One.
Or have there been complaints? Yes, okay.
Should I make?
Should we come to the table or?
You can come, you can.
There have been.
You can come.
You can. It's, it's a.
Okay.
There's not, in fact, I was.
And you're here, so there are two.
There was no objection.
Okay, there's two for Citroa Beach Association. One is regarding the alcohol beverage license, and one is regarding the entertainment license.
Right, right.
Are you speaking to both of them?
Well, we're, we're from the, um, my name's Joanne Wyckoff. I live at one fifty Fourth Corner. My colleague, Della Shepherd, lives at one fifty.
Seventy, Citroa.
Seventy, Citroa. We're, we're actually co-founders of the Citroa Salt Marsh Stewardship Initiative.
Okay.
Um, and that's why we're here. Um, you know, I realize this is the girl license here. But our interest is being here is to protect the Sand Hills Salt Marsh. The S V A has a parking lot that's, and it's full of cars that seem to approach on that, um, buried marsh we're trying to protect. Um, and the parking issue, I don't know, I know, I know you've been here a lot. I don't know.
I ha, I do recall.
It's come up a couple of years in a row at the Select Ward.
No, every year. Oh, okay, I only have two years, every year.
Every year, yeah. And, um, so, and we have tried, um, to, to work with the S V A to, to solve this problem. Um, and so we're, we're actually speaking here tonight to hope you can help us solve the solution or come up with ways that we can solve the wisdom. What we would like is if we could get the S V A not to cut down the vegetation and the brush all around their parking lot and let it restore itself. And we would, uh, we would watch this regrowth. And if, um, and in consultation with the Conservation Commission, we would, you know, watch over it. And if, and if need, need be plant things to get to revegetate that area. We have tried, we thought we were going to get somewhere last year with them, but we didn't. Um, and we are kind of at a loss as to how to get them to work with us. So I'm wondering, um, you know, if you can advise us, give us, um, I mean, we were, we were working with T J and Charlie, the, you know, president, vice president, and then it just went dark. And so that's really the, the ask is to stop cutting the vegetation and just let it return to. And I think if we revegetated it and helped with restoring it, it would improve the look of that portion of the marsh. Would also improve the look of their parking lot. I think they would be very pleased. Um, but we haven't gotten that far. So that's, we would, we would love your help or advice or guidance.
Conservation, please go talk to Jen.
Yeah. I was just, actually, I was messing up the phone. I always send the Google Art to stay. This is the one right across the street from.
Across Otis Road.
Across Otis, right.
Oh, the parking lot? Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, oh, you're not, I know.
I mean, I've been there, honestly. That's why I didn't have to recuse myself. I've been there once. But, so they're cutting back. How far are they cutting back?
Well, I mean.
Just a day.
Well, the S V A is, and they're, I don't know, they hire someone?
We understand this. This is town on land. We don't know who owns it.
Yeah, it's, it's not clear who owns it.
Oh, well, there you go.
They believe they own it. They have permission to park there for conservation. It's whether or not they are.
In compliance.
Pushing the boundaries of that compliance.
Yeah, compliance.
And pushing that back. So they would need to talk to Jen, and Jen will have to go out and make sure that what is being parked on is what is allowed to be parked on. Beyond that, they're not supposed to touch.
Well, what I'm, in my mind hearing is that if they are the ones cutting things down, then they only have a right to cut down what theoretically they own.
And they don't even necessarily have that if it grazes the wetlands.
Well, I, I'm not going to guarantee that. That's, that's conservation. I can't, I can't, for me. My point is, if they are cutting down grass or plantings on land that they do not own, that's a problem.
Yes.
Well.
But.
It's always a.
It's a problem depending on who owns the property.
Right.
And it's unclear who owns that property.
Is it unclear who owns the entire marsh?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, great.
So we, we do have some money in the capital plan to look at that marsh, but those are things to restore it. But this is really a conservation issue to make sure that they're not going and continuing pushing back the, the edge of the marsh.
Okay.
So this is to.
All right.
Back to Jen. She's in and out this weekend. She has some stuff, but call Jen next week and they should have some paperwork on it, but it's a conservation issue.
Okay.
And then we just thought they need the parking to have their events, that they need the liquor and entertainment licenses. So we thought maybe there was some way to say, uh, you can't push, you have to stay fifteen feet back from.
That's kind of what we're thinking, but yeah, okay, Jen can make this determination.
It's been on, beyond your career.
I don't know how we can cut them down.
Okay, so we will, that will be good. Yes, because the liquor license has put pressure on the marsh. It really has.
Well, they've had a liquor license for at least ten years.
No, so from seventeen.
Eight years. Seventeen.
Yeah, and it's, it's gotten kind of worse.
Was it, was it, was it a, that old?
Before that, they must have one day.
Okay, one day.
I think there were serious, they always have them. Right, right, right.
Um, so it just, and, and now it is more of a entertainment venue. I mean, it's becoming more like a business rather than a, so they, they rent it out and lots of cars come from far away um, for parties. And, um, so it does stress.
They want to park their cars there to support when, for their events that they could utilize.
Okay.
Uh, so we can.
Okay, we'll go to Jen. Thank you.
Is anyone online that's, um,
We thought that.
representing Citro Beach?
We thought they might be here, but they.
But no, we usually say for a renewal, there's no need, uh, for the.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
They have come in the past.
They have come in the past.
They have come in the past. Usually sometimes it's crowded.
Yeah. Yeah.
We were not aware of that issue.
Yeah, well, right, it's.
Otherwise, we could have relied on, but we didn't know there'd be a issue. Well, they know, we know, we know they don't. We all know.
But, um, do you have any, it's, so it's the parking specifically, not related to?
It's the encroachment.
The actual entertainment or no way to.
Well, we, that's, that's, that's.
The Citro Salt Marsh Stewardship Initiative is only after the parking. Me, speaking as a resident of that neighborhood, I have problems with, uh, some other parts of the license. Uh, I will tell you, uh, I'm opposed to a bar operation in the neighborhood. If there must be a bar on Sand Hills, I think there should be no outside parking, better effort to keep kids out of the bar area, better trash cleanup after events, and a limit to bar patrons parking in the wetland across the street. Uh, I know that part that will perhaps be dealt with, uh, you know, in another way, but, but meanwhile, I'm just saying, please don't hold back the hours, please don't let them, could blast noise into the neighborhood. Uh, I have, twice last year, I saw kids in the bar area. I they had a Halloween party for kids. They advertised special adult drinks uh, for the patrons, for the parents, I guess, that were enduring the Halloween party for the kids. Anyway, so that, those, I think the operations could have less impact on the neighborhood if, uh, the hours were reduced or, and they say, no, we're thinking that, but.
I thought we did say to be, I thought we've had this conversation.
Yeah, there, there are, there are restrictions on that, towards drinking, um, but it usually has to be uh, kind, kindly enforced, because people are hot and they wanna go out.
Right.
And then they all, the words.
So there's, so there's.
Then there's music, and there is some music and blasting, so.
All those people having fun.
I know, I mean, you know, but that's not, that's, well, a concern, but it's more to, to really help the marsh protect it, yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe they'll start having an interest in that. I don't know. We will see. All right, that's. Roll call. Okay.
Okay, so thank you for your comments, and we will get you in touch with Jen.
Oh, well, yeah, I'll, we know Jen.
Right.
So, all right, we will, do we, do we specifically say you told us?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, so.
Please do.
Okay, okay.
And, and can you just tell me what hours, when you, if you vote this renewal, what hours?
So my understanding, that's a great question. My understanding is that has not changed. Is that correct, Shari?
Yeah.
Yes, so it has not changed. This is the same as last year, and I can read for you. So it's April first to January fifteenth. Um, and this is for the alcohol, Monday through Thursday, eleven AM to ten PM, Friday to Sunday, eleven AM to twelve AM.
Oh, it is twelve. It was rolled back the year before to eleven thirty, no?
It's twelve.
And.
And then is, is that, was that the same as last year? I guess that's.
I know, I can't remember.
And then the inside entertainment only Sunday through Thursday, eleven AM to ten PM.
Oh, that's what's, that's.
That, I think, was what was rolled back.
That's good. That's a good thing.
Friday to Saturday, eleven AM to eleven thirty PM for acoustic amplified musicians and/or DJ and equipment.
So it's for this.
So maybe the little bathroom thing was just for the entertainment.
I know you do.
Yeah, because that is the most promising.
Yeah.
For those of us who, who, who are here.
And the entertainment is in, inside only.
Correct.
Right.
So do you want me to do motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to renew the two thousand twenty five seasonal on-premise chapter twelve club all alcohol beverages license for the Citro Beach Association from April first, twenty twenty five through January fifteenth, twenty twenty six, with approved hours of Monday through Thursday, eleven AM to ten PM, Friday to Sunday, eleven AM to twelve AM. And further, move to renew the twenty twenty five annual entertainment license for the Citro Beach Association for inside entertainment only, Sunday to Thursday, eleven AM to ten PM, Friday to Saturday, eleven AM to eleven thirty PM for acoustic amplified musicians and/or DJ and equipment.
And move by Ms. Conley, second.
Second, but.
Oh, sorry, what'd you say?
Um, after the vote, I, I would like to make a comment about this, uh, before we move on.
Oh, sure.
So second for the motion.
Okay, Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
You know, that's all in favor of the three that are here.
Um, so I really think that this board needs to send a letter to the Citro Beach Associ- uh, Beach Association that, you know, we acknowledge they're a longstanding group, that, you know, it's a great, um, contribute, it's a great element in that neighborhood for the most part, um, but to really folk, to really reiterate that, you know, we hear these concerns every single year. And I think that we need to start emphasizing that, um, you know, if, if they, yeah, they get hot and somebody walks out with a beer, it's like, that's not okay. And yes, there's an enforcement issue, but I think we need to put them on notice that, you know, we are going to start paying closer attention and direct, you know, our, our, our folks to do that, and and, and on the conservation piece as well. Um, because maybe next year, we're not going to, you know, I, I really think that just you know, cutting them back and all of that and having this conversation isn't enough at this point. And I don't wanna shut them down because I think they'll be responsive, but we gotta put a little muscle behind it, so I would ask that the, um, chair consider writing a letter on behalf of the board to them just reiterating what we expect of them in the coming season.
Okay. You agree?
Oh, I do.
Yeah, okay, I can assume. All right, we will do that.
You're pretty.
Thank you. And Shari, do you usually send an approval to them?
They, you know, from at least, that's the rule.
Maybe we should.
So we should go with.
It needs to go with it.
Yes.
So is there a way we could coordinate that?
Uh, quickly.
Yeah, okay.
The chair can write that letter without it coming back before the board.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Send the men back in, yeah.
Don't give up the, um, gavel.
We keep in the camp.
Go for it, chair.
Yeah, I wanna tell it.
When you were away, I assigned you something.
She did.
Did it all, did it all work out?
All right.
So we've got to vote to approve the renewal of Hawker Pedal license for dinghy. No, I think there's been no issues in it, so we're all, so. Move that the select board vote to renew the Hawker Pedal license for the dinghy for the twenty twenty five season pending, do we have the approval?
Second.
Sarah Stigman, Campfield, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Please, we have a sound favor.
Right, other business, uh, correspondence for.
Correspondence, we all have a copy of the letter from Mrs. Green, and she was able to illuminate that in the meeting.
Yes.
That's all I have. Liaison reports, Ms. Campfield, any good?
Uh, nothing, sir.
All right, anyone else? Affordable housing trust, I was in the meeting the other night, and, um, uh, Seven Driftway, and, and what's the other road, the other property there?
Stockbridge.
Stockbridge Road, they were talking about that, and, uh, apparently Seven Driftway does not have a buyer at this time, so they're reviewing all of this with town council.
So seven Driftway for their density bonus, they had to do affordable housing unit.
Right.
They're gonna put a group home on property on Stockbridge, that was all by the affordable housing, by the town to the affordable housing trust. Uh, and I think the affordable housing trust is getting to the point where they want something done.
Yeah, they're just, they're gonna move on Driftway, and they're gonna take care of the other side with, with the future. That's all.
Who else?
And there's a nice party at, uh, Tinker's Sun for the Citro Heritage Trails, um, tomorrow night. We can spend some money donating. Should be a nice time. I think it's six o'clock.
Yeah, the Boy Scouts.
Oh, kind of like. We love the Boy Scouts.
So bring the Boy Scouts there.
Another stuff.
No, no.
We will go on to.
Mets.
The Mets.
Move to accept the select board minutes for March fourth, two thousand twenty five, further, we need to accept select four minutes from nine to eleven, twenty twenty five.
But Ms. Conley, second and five, Ms. Harrison, roll call.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Conley.
Aye.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Yes, all right, we are now. Uh, we need to, yeah, the proper. All right, so we are going to be, I'm gonna read this, but just a little note. Next on the agenda is, uh, executive session on uh, two issues, and then adjourn and not reconvene. So the chair declares that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose six of the open meeting law to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and I infer that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiated positioning of the select board in connection with this matter, the Lawson Commons statute. Uh, I further, the chair declares the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, shellfish aquaculture. Move that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose six of open meeting law to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of the Lawson Commons statute, and that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating of the select board in connection with this matter, the board will not reconvene in open session. Move that the select board go into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation of shellfish aquaculture, and that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, and the board will not reconvene in open session. This requires a roll call votes.
Second. I think that.
Oh.
Second.
Mr. Goodrich.
Ms. Conley, yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Campfield.
Aye.
Thank you, Anna's all in favor. Okay, so.